There we go.
Start over.
Thank you. Confirming. Let us know if you want us to make some noise, but why?
That's test.
Good now.
What's that?
I'm confused. What's happening?
The other silly.
I was like, is there a mutual question here or was that?
I knew she was.
Okay. Thanks everybody for your patience. Um, okay, so we're gonna move into our first item on our uh first presentation or our first update on the agenda. Apologies for the audio issues. So it's Olivia. It's your, it's you with the student advisory board update.
Yep. Hi, I'm Olivia Richards, sophomore class SAB. Um, things have been going really well and student council is currently having a can drive. We encourage everyone to bring in cans, if you can. And the main concern of the students has been about homeroom if or when masks become optional. Since there wouldn't be a time, a need to have time for math break anymore. Having that time for homeroom would be really helpful because homeroom is a good time to get information to the students and a good time to have the morning update. Because the morning update keeps students in the loop and helps them not miss any important information. Homeroom is also good for when, if a student comes to school late, they won't miss any class material because they'll be having homeroom instead of a class first. So that was what most of the students were talking about. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone have questions for Olivia?
Thank you.
How does morning update work now? Do you guys, when do people watch it?
Normally they film and then they put out every Friday like as email to all the students and teachers.
So you have to act, you have to take the time to watch it versus it happening during a class?
Yeah, it will normally happen starting your first period that day if the teacher decides to play it. But it's up to the teacher mostly.
I love those morning updates. I know the principal puts them in weekly memo now. So it's fun because then we get to kind of see them too normally. Couldn't have been something parents get to watch. Um, well, can we take that into advisement and let the
Sure. We'll take it under advice.
Thank you. Okay, we have a lot of people here I think are probably Okay, we have a lot of people here, I think, are probably here for the presentation that's next. Our Vision 2025 feature this week is the Visual Arts Global Scholastic Art Award Recognition. So this is Mannheim.
Yeah, I think full screen is good and then I'll just. Okay. Thank you. Evening, everyone. I'm privileged to share with you tonight the results of the 2022 Scholastic Art Awards. I would like to congratulate all of the 68 Masco Award winners, all who submitted to the scholastic contest, as well as every art student and Masco teacher for their impressive efforts and accomplishments this year.
Stacy, say that again really loud so everybody here.
Sixty-eight.
Students won an award from the Globe Scholastics this year.
That's impressive.
Incredible.
Any work created between January and December of 2021 was eligible for consideration in the scholastic competition. The work is judged on the basis of originality, technical skill, and the emergence of a personal voice or vision. The first half of this calendar year was hybrid, and I'm incredibly impressed with how the students and teachers adapted and what they are able to achieve given the less than ideal circumstances we were all contending with. I'll be highlighting seven examples of gold key student work in particular, one from each of the Masco art teachers. I'm pleased that many of the students, parents, and teachers have joined us here tonight. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the longest-running art competition for teens in the United States. It is a wonderful opportunity for students to share their work with a larger audience and to have their creativity appreciated. It began in 1923 and has many notable winners over the years, including Andy Warhol, Richard Avedon, and Robert Redford, to name a few. This year, there were 7,449 visual art entries from across the state of Massachusetts. There were 455 gold keys, seven, excuse me, 519 silver keys, and 935 honorable mentions that were awarded. All gold and silver key work will be displayed online in March. All gold key work from all states is in contention for national awards, which will be announced towards the end of March. Certificates and pins will be sent directly to students in March, and all award winners will be present, will be, excuse me, all award winners will be printed in the Boston Sunday Globe also in March. So now I'm gonna just talk a little bit about the middle school first. So the middle school had a total of 20 awards. That is the most of any other, it's the most awards of any middle school program in the state. We were not factoring in after-school programs, private tutoring, and after-school programs. This is all based on public or private schools. So the middle school received five gold keys, eight silver keys, seven honorable mentions, and the close contenders were Wellesley Middle School with 16, Rivers School with eight, Hockington Middle School with six. And the next couple of slides, I'm gonna just share with you some of the the work from Ms. Amsler's seventh grade classes. So we see examples of some printmaking, low-relief ceramic sculpture, some digital art, and an explosion book. Another explosion book, on the upper left, we have some digital art, graphite and collage work, down at the bottom, some more printmaking, and another ceramic low-relief sculpture and printmaking. Now, the first gold key piece I'd like to highlight is Alessia Capice's Smokey in Pieces, and I'll just read from Ms. Amsler. This digital art assignment was done using Google Draw last spring. Students inserted a photo onto a blank canvas and used the program tools to draw title-like shapes over the image, color-matching each shape as best as they could to the photo. The goal was to create a mosaic effect by having the many individual pieces work cohesively to replicate the image. The reference photo was deleted at the end, leaving just the drawn shapes. Students could then insert a solid color or gradient background. By having the students share their file with me, I could see them working in real time, whether they were in person or remote. I could monitor their progress, help them with specific functions using the application tools on my computer, and even see when their last edit was made. This was a very successful lesson that enabled me to fully engage every student during remote and hybrid learning. Alessia's one, the gold key, is a portrait of her dog, Smokey. And I believe she is here, is that right? Are you here? I'm wrong, I thought she was here. Um, thank you for your work and congratulations, Alessia. Unfortunately, Ms. Amsler was not able to join us this evening, but this is still an opportune moment for me to publicly congratulate her for being awarded. This is a mouthful, 2022 Massachusetts Art Education Association Middle Level Art Educator of the Year. This is a very well-deserved honor. Our seventh grade students are very fortunate to have her as their art teacher during their first year at Masco, and the adults in the building are very fortunate to work with her as well. And now I'm sharing some of the work from Mrs. Malanowski's eighth grade classes. And on the left is a ceramic monster sculpture. At the top is a series of prints in a handmade book. Below that is a still life drawing, and then a digital self-portrait on the right. On the left and right, so another couple of examples of some printmaking. We also have a wonderful little monster at the bottom and a embossed metal design at the top. Now, I would like to highlight Greta Hartung's piece, Social Isolation. So again, I'm gonna read from Mrs. Malanowski. Greta's project is a blind contour self-portrait that was completed during trimester two last year. So she was, sorry, it's a little long. She was remote every other day. All students were provided a minimal.
There you go.
Minimal art kit at the beginning of the trimester, which included watercolor paper, three to four crayola markers, a black Sharpie, paintbrush, and a white wax crayon. The students had access to more colors at home, they could use those as well. Included in their packets was a printout of a slideshow I used to introduce the lesson. This was also posted for reference in Blackboard for students to access at any time. I used the iPad camera to share live video for my demonstrations. With the technology provided by Masco, I was able to teach the lesson the exact way I would have taught it live in class. I was so pleased with the work of the students and that Greta received a gold key for her thought-provoking portrait. The only difference between the portraits created this year versus when I've taught the assignment pre-pandemic is the slightly more limited color palette. Is it so Greta, are you here? Okay, now we're moving on to the high school. So Masco High School had a total of 48 awards. This is the third highest total of all schools in the state. And then this data includes all schools statewide with 20 or more total awards. That's sort of what we're seeing on the right. Again, not included are entries associated with private instructors or after-school programs. And then we did a comparison of all the North Shore High Schools. And it's a little unusual this year, at the bottom, I wrote down a number of schools, Bishop Fenwick, Georgetown, Manchester Report, North Andover, PBD Salem, Swarms, Triton. No awards or no submissions, I don't know which. Typically, we'd see more from those schools as well, but it's, it was a challenging year for everybody. So now we're looking at some of the high school work. An example, some lovely examples of graphite drawings. Below that, on the left, printmaking, relief printmaking, a ceramic sculpture, and four quadrants of a scratchboard drawing. And on the left, we have digital photography. In the center is a oil pastel drawing, some more graphite drawings at the top, and another ceramic sculpture container. And now, let's see, the next focus piece is Megan Brady's artwork titled Fusion. So Megan created a striking overprint this past fall, reading from Mrs. Evans' comments, in Art Studio One titled Fusion. For this assignment, students were inspired by Henri Matisse's paper cuts. Students created their own abstract paper cut collage, keeping the elements of art and principles of design in mind. Students then translated their cut-out collage into a drawing which they carved on a linoleum plate. Megan's award-winning print successfully layered value and used repetition to achieve rhythm and engage the viewer. When she pulled the print off the press, we both had that wow moment, the ultimate joy of printmaking. So Megan, I believe you are here, and Mrs. Evans too. Couple more pages of high school work. A lot of scratchboards this year that were done beautifully from last spring that received the award. So another example. And this was exploring like a gumball.
Yeah, sorry, the scratchboard is four different views of a gumball machine. The four drawings reveal the object.
The center image is a color pencil drawing. Then we see a collage in the upper right and some digital photography at the bottom, right? Another beautiful linoleum print on the left. On the top are a series of graphite drawings and then a collage of the same object. Below that is another ceramic container sculpture and digital photography in the center. And now I would like to highlight Paige Panagos's piece titled A Stitch in Time. Reading from Ms. Saieda, the project that Paige completed so beautifully was a graphite drawing from Art Studio Two Three last spring. Our theme for the year was revelations. I came up with a project where students would not only reveal something about themselves through the subject matter of both a large and small drawing, but would, but they would physically reveal it through the construction of a window in the large drawing, revealing the smaller drawing. Paige revealed her love of embroidery. In the large drawing, she shows herself in the process of making, and then in the small drawing, she reveals the end product. We were able to produce this work, even in a hybrid environment, through the use of critiquing both in person and through the computer. I was also able to livestream myself working alongside the students so they could have a constant demonstration of graphite shading technique if they needed further clarification as they worked. Paige, are you here with us? Not here, okay. Congratulations to Paige. Okay, let's see. Some more high school work, more scratchboard, they were awesome. This one is about a bicycle, a beautiful colored pencil drawing in the center. Below that is a collage. And then on the right is a Conti crayon drawing. On the upper left and on the right are two examples of some lovely colored pencil work. Below, on the lower left, is another Conti crayon drawing. Is another ceramic container sculpture. And let's see, who am I highlighting now? Let's see. This I highlight Scott Hubbard's Chicago bandsaw box. So, reading from Mr. Dow. Scott Hubbard won a gold key for his beautiful and skillfully executed bandsaw box that he created last spring in woodworking three. He was completely in person for the entire process. For this project, pieces of wood are stacked and glued up with clamps. A template is then spray-mounted to the wood block and cut out using a bandsaw. The inside is cut out next to create a drawer. The pieces are sanded and a clear coat finishes a plot. This is not a quick and easy project. Scott's design was especially challenging, but like all the work he does, being deterred by challenging is not in his vocabulary. He really takes the idea of craftsmanship very seriously. The piece was gorgeous. And Scott, I think you're here, are you here? Okay. A lot of high school work here. So, let's see, did I just skip something? No. Okay, um, so we have an example of some digital photography, that particular project, I'll talk a little bit more about momentarily. Below that, example of some fashion design, another stellar colored pencil drawing, and another beautiful scratchboard drawing. On the left is an extremely skillfully rendered Conti drawing. Next to that, some more fashion, digital photography, and some graphic design work at the top. And now I would like to share Jonathan McPorry's photo titled Balloon Explosion from Mr. Yuckins. The high-speed water balloon project is inspired by Dr. Harold Doc Edgerton's high-speed photography work. Doc was an MIT electrical engineering professor who also invented the modern-day flash tube. He used it to capture photographs of things that happen too fast for the naked eye to observe, like a hummingbird's wings flapping, a bullet tearing through a plane car, or droplets of milk dripping into a cup of milk. For our version, we use a laser that is synced to a flash that beams just behind the water balloon hanging by a string. When a dart is thrown at the water balloon, now everyone wears eye protection, and stands away at a reasonable distance, it pops, latex pulls away, and the flash goes off, captures the water while it's still in the shape of the balloon. Jonathan's gold key-winning photograph strategically caught this dramatic moment. We do this project regularly in my Photo 234 class with students taking turns working the camera, the lights, the flash, making and hanging the water balloons, and throwing the dart. So Jonathan, are you here? Congratulations, Scott. On this slide, we have an abundance of colored pencil drawings. The three on the left and the larger one on the top right are all colored pencil. And then there's another example of some graphic design work. On the left is a pen and ink drawing. A student did this, I believe, during, you know, when he was working at home, this is a drawing of his workspace during the pandemic. The two large portraits are oil pastel senior portraits, and the lower right is a digital artwork and another little ceramic container sculpture. And I wanted to just mention too, Kira Smith, a senior, she submitted six works as a portfolio. The scholastic does review portfolios. Those need to consist of six distinctive works that communicate a single cohesive idea or visual investigation. And so these were the six pieces she submitted, and she received an honorable mention for that. And the last focus piece is titled Tradition by Olivia Vaz. "The large senior oil pastel portrait project has become quite a longstanding rite of passage for our AP Art students. It is almost universally anticipated with equal parts of trepidation and excitement. For this assignment, the students find a prop to incorporate that connects to some aspect of who they are. They also need to capture themselves in a unique and expressive manner. The students can depict any mood, frustration, strength, fatigue, joy, to name a few possibilities. Olivia chose to use a traditional Portuguese spark that connects with her heritage. She created a stellar piece of artwork with her expressive pose that fills the composition in a dynamic way and skillfully render the energy in oil pastel. I'm so pleased that Olivia's work was recognized with a Gold Key Award. So many of the current seniors recall reviewing, excuse me, recall viewing the senior portraits when they were freshmen and thinking that they could never be that good at art. It's truly gratifying to see the kids develop and learn throughout their years at Masco. They're able to achieve much more than they ever thought they were capable of." And then in conclusion, I'd just like to congratulations. Okay, so in conclusion, I'd like to share some of the many benefits of art education that these works exemplify and the students experience. So self-expression, critical thinking, creativity, flexibility, initiative, productivity, decision-making, perseverance, accountability, confidence, and understanding that problems can have more than one solution. Thank you.
You, Stacy.
Welcome.
Want to have anything they want to ask before? I'm super impressed every, always, every time I walk down the hallway and have you here to be able to tell you to your faces, to spread it to your peers and your teachers. It's fantastic. And I actually also just want to add, this is featuring the people that got one of these mentions, recognitions. But I mean, I just feel like it's across the board in your department. And also, I got to write the annual report for Masco. And other departments talked about interdisciplinary collaborations with art classes that incorporated things into their other math, science, and I think maybe history as well, if I'm remembering right. There's been a number of times where there's things happening across classrooms where you're working together. It's really neat to see that happening. So thank you for that innovative and creative and wonderful stuff that you're doing. All right, thank you. We have next our middle school. We haven't had a principal. I think we asked you.
We're going to start with the school improvement plan, and then we'll do the update after that. Yeah.
Absolutely unbelievable. I would die somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
Should have.
Sorry, when you're done.
One, four percent of all the things.
Was.
I know.
Expert.
What I love, like while we're waiting.
Stacy, that work is unbelievable.
Yeah. Really amazing.
That's, that's an understatement. It's unbelievable. I've never seen anything like it. It's unreal.
See, my daughter, she brings, I mean, just
Very talented.
The things that she draws and a couple of her friends around there, just better than I could ever have hoped to be. Okay, so we're going to get started with the school improvement plan tonight. And I want to introduce Caitlin Roble. She's one of our science teachers. And I'll, if you want to just tell what team you're on for a second, and then I'll introduce you.
I'm Caitlin Roble. I'm not in frame. I'm not sure what it stands. I'm on seven red, and I teach life science.
And Annie Duval, she's one of our parents. Go ahead and talk a little bit about yourself.
Hi, I'm Annie Duval. I'm a parent of a seventh grader here. One of four parent volunteers on the school council, parent representative. I also have two younger elementary school students in top fields and happy to be here.
Thanks. So there are two of the members of our school advisory council this year. We also have Aaron Folios, Rachel McCauley, and Rebecca Thomas for parents. And then for faculty and staff, we have Alexis Costas, Gavin Monigal, and Alison Prokopio. So we're each going to take a different portion of the school improvement plan tonight. Start to talk about, we have three different goals, and then we'll have a few minutes for questions at the end.
I'll be talking about the first goal, which is fostering a global community, team building, and diversity and inclusion. I'm going to try my best not to read off the screen like I tell students not to. I do want to be accurate. The objectives that we had for this were to make sure that students were able to have a good global view, but then also understand their part and their community as well. So the first objective is to ensure students connect their learning experiences to their membership in the global community. So activities include experiences connecting student learning to the global community or focuses on cultural diversity and focusing on the impact of their lives on the global community and awareness sensitivity. Students are to participate in assignments and lessons that celebrate culture of diversity and the impact of all people. This is an arrow. Yes, okay. And then the last one is establish a climate of inclusion and respect and promoting a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community where all students feel a sense of belonging and differences are valued. So those were our main focuses.
The second piece falls under school climate and culture. And when our group started working together in October, we felt it was really important to acknowledge the effects of the pandemic on our middle school population as we set the course for moving forward. So I'll call your attention to the yellow section here. And our second goal is to acknowledge that the pandemic has affected learners in many unique ways, socially, emotionally, and educationally, and combination of all of those as well. We want to maintain an environment that promotes good decision-making, kindness, respect, and a sense of belonging, importantly acknowledging that we are all living and working through this together. So from here, we've created two objectives. Firstly, implementing school-wide practices to support pandemic-related mental health awareness and resources, as well as creating practices, and next one, 2.2, to promote interpersonal growth and academic study skills. These are two areas that we felt could benefit from some improvement. And I won't also read word for word, but the ways that we're going to do this are really to promote the school-wide resources and the help that is available to our students, including mental health awareness and resources, study skills, strategies for building personal growth, offering opportunities for students to reflect on their own emotional needs and to develop their own coping strategies around navigating middle school as well as just adolescents in general. And this will be done through small group discussions, school-wide assemblies. And we'll also work with teachers and staff to determine specific needs, providing opportunities to students as appropriate. So all of this is with the ultimate goal of making sure that our students feel supported and understood, that they recognize they're not alone, there are resources available for them, whether, whether it's with mental health issues or other, other ways to build academic resilience. We also, we want our students to have opportunities to grow both their interpersonal skills and study skills, all paving the way for their academic success. And that leads to our third, our third goal.
Right now, our third goal, like Annie says, is an academical. And it is to accelerate learning by improving study skills, math skills, study skills and math skills, and then skills in the areas of English language arts. So our first goal under this one, or our first objective is to monitor student progress and assess areas of strength and need through data analysis of the 2021 MCAS. That specifically will be done during our PLC time, which all teachers in the middle school are a member of, different small PLCs. And then devising strategies to create, provide a lesson, improve understanding in the areas of weakness. Part of this as well, one of the things that we're doing for this, for this strategy, the acceleration academies that you've heard me talk about during these meetings, that Patty is also leading up, and those are occurring right now. They actually have already started, taking place after school. So that's one of our strategies that we're, we have available to students. Under ELA, students will participate in assignments and assessments that strengthen specific identified writing skills. And again, PLCs will be used to identify those areas and deficits and as MCAS data from last year. There's, there's a couple more things, just strategies and other areas that we're going to look at in relation to those two goals. I won't go through everything specifically. We drew that, but I do want to call out our two department heads from math and English. Sarah Smith from math, and then Megan Hildebrand from ELA, who were instrumental in helping develop these objectives for the school improvement plan. So although they're not part of the SAT specifically, they work closely with me to develop these and identify areas that we should focus on for the goals and then lead that work with the PLCs and the teachers this year. So thank you to them. And then also, I want to especially call out Caitlin and Annie for coming here tonight and taking their time to be here to present part of the school improvement plan for us, and then for their work as members of the SEC this year. I really have to give a big shout out to them because this was a lot of work this year. We really started completely over with the school improvement plan this year, and we're going to use this as a carryover for next year's school improvement plan as well. You know, tweaking it and revising the goals, but it really was a whole brand new effort this year for the school improvement plan. Last year, with the pandemic and everything else that was going on, we took some of the goals that we already had and revised them and came up with a couple of new ones. But this year, we started with a clean slate. So I really want to recognize the work that everyone did on that. It was great. And again, thanks for coming out tonight. So, all right. We have a couple minutes for questions on the plan, if anyone has anything.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's also because it's a, it's a long night. I want to also thank you though, because I remember last year you brought people from the team. And I love that. And in the future, and I want to ask you to answer this now, but I'd love to hear more about the, it says here with the mental, the social emotional one. Available resources widely publicized and called upon is mentioned there. And I just want to hear a little bit more about how, how people are accessing what you're offering in the future, not so when you're in the future.
Do that for the next update.
Yeah, because it does, everything else is awesome.
So we have one of our adjustment counselors, Alexis Costas, is on the SEC as well. So she's instrumental in that piece of it.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now I'll move into my middle school update for tonight. So our general update, we're in the middle of Spirit Week this week, leading up to February breaks. And a couple of the things that we've done, we have a different theme for each day. We had a dress like the decades day yesterday, where students and staff could dress up like they were in the eighties or the nineties or even the early 2000s. And much of that might sound recent to us.
You look the same.
You look the same yesterday. What are you, the 2020s? I love it when my daughter comes up to me and asks for old clothes.
Makes me feel good.
Mr. Wilson was dressed up in his nineties attire, which was a pearl jacket shirt, jeans, and I think a flannel shirt, which probably can all remember wearing in 1995.
There's no pictures of this? I've heard a lot about Mr. Wilson.
We also have team time this Friday, which is something that we're definitely getting into the school year more this year. We had team time a few Fridays ago where kids, it was, it was shorter, it was one period, basically where kids were playing games in their homerooms and on teams. And we're doing an expansion of that on Friday, so it's going to be the whole day, which I think for the Friday before February vacation is a great time to do that. And there's a few different activities. So yes, there'll be games. They're going to do some more physical activity in the gym with Mr. Mark Coolier. I think that's for eighth grade. Seventh grade is going to be watching a movie, but I'm not going to say what it is right now because I don't want to give away the secret if they don't know yet. We also are going to do two in-school concerts on Friday. So we had our chorus concert just last night. And so the choral groups are going to be doing an in-school concert for the seventh graders in the morning, and then again in the afternoon for the eighth graders. So we split them up just because we can't quite squeeze both teams together at once into the auditorium. So we're really looking forward to that, and I know students are as well. The overall atmosphere and climate in the building right now, as I was saying, is very positive. And our case counts, and I, I won't talk too much about that because I'm sure Mike will touch on it, but the case counts are down with COVID right now, which is great. So our action rate right now, unlike on January, we're averaging between three and four percent students absent each day, which is much more in line with what you saw pre-pandemic for, for attendance. So we're, we're very pleased with that. That's, that's been, that's been great. So some of the challenges, again, I've touched on this already this year, but SEL and then accelerating learning continue to be a focus this year. And as we know, you know, we, I think we can all see the light at the end of the tunnel here, and things are definitely starting to return to normal. But it still continues to be a focus, and you know, it's been a lot of stress on everyone the past couple of years. So we're keeping an eye on it. And then this isn't specifically a challenge per se, but we are preparing to administer the MCAS. That's already coming up. It starts late March that we administer in the middle school, and then takes up the month of March and most of April as well. So we are looking forward to that. The seventh grade transition, believe it or not, we're already starting our work on that. It's upcoming with course choices, and we're reaching out to the elementary schools and the principals to get things rolling with it, the registration process for sixth graders to seventh graders. The World Language Department and Jean O'Hearn, the department head, are planning to visit schools to promote language study. Each of the elementary, upper elementary schools, they plan to visit with some students and talk about each of the three language options that we have available for them at Masco. And then we're planning a special education parents' night in March. And then looking forward, we'll host a sixth grade parents' night in May, which we hope we will do in person. And I don't see why not this year, after the last two years of it being a remote event. So climate and culture, the pit committee continues to plan various community activities. I mentioned team time already. That's a direct result of their work. We have the in-school concert on Friday, as I mentioned, and we're continuing on with the gotcha tickets and then the drawings for the gotcha ticket winners for a gift card for a local business. So we're, we're keeping those things going. We're bringing some new things in. Students have really responded well to the different types of non-specifically, you know, course academic-related activities that we've been doing, but really more of that social emotional learning that we're promoting in the team building and community building. So that, that's been going well for us. Few fun photos to share with you. That top left photo is from the STEM club. And actually Caitlin Roble runs that club, so they do something called the Future Cities Competition. I wish I could tell you more about what is actually pictured there, but that's part of the Future Cities Competition in the city that they had to build. One of our art projects there, some students during a team time activity there on the lower right. Um, some students during a team time activity there on the lower right, and then you might be asking, why is there a picture of a dinner there? Um, but that's from Mr. Cobb's. Um, cooking Bob excels. And so uh, he does conduct that remotely right now. Because it lends itself to it, whereas he leads the cooking um kind of class. And then students are at home cooking on the other end and then they take pictures and send it into him. So that's pretty cool. And then here's some photos from our coral concert last night. Um, Mr. Rosario and Mr. Uh, Brian Ocock's students who sang. And they did a great job and we're looking forward to their um performance on Friday in school for student party as well. So that covers it for the middle school update. Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So I thought everybody showed up here tonight for me and Phil, but. Phil scared him away.
Probably millions watched.
Millions promote.
Millions of people.
Still awake.
Like the Super Bowl.
So we're going to continue our conversation around the FY twenty three budget recommendation. Tonight's conversation is broken into four uh sections. The first. Uh, will continue to unpack uh four of the major expense categories and go into some detail there. The second uh part of the discussion is in response to a request from January nineteenth to take a. A closer look at the school committee. School committees uh specifically their operating budget. And then the third category will look at uh another request that was made that same night. Uh, we'll talk about uh additional resources. And then finally, we'll talk about uh requests that were made through the budget process that. Uh, weren't included uh or haven't been included yet in our budget recommendation. Uh, so before we get into some of the expense categories, just a reminder. In the room and those watching, uh, our budget recommendation. Currently stands uh as a level service with a minor adjustment for staffing model. Uh, for FY twenty three, our recommendation reflects an increase in operating expenses. Of uh approximately eight hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars or two point three percent. And an increase of a little over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars or two point nine percent. And our operating assessments compared to the current year budget. Yeah, so tonight's um continuation of um a deep dive into our major expense categories. Uh, we'll talk about uh retirement contribution. Uh, which is a little over one point two million dollars. It represents a sixteen thousand dollar. Or one point four increase over the FY twenty two budget. Uh, next, we'll talk about transportation, uh, regular ed transportation. But uh, the recommendation is a little over one point one million dollars. Uh, it represents a forty four thousand dollar increase or four percent. The third category we'll take a look at is insurances, including property liability and workman's compensation insurance. That cap cost category uh is a little over two hundred and five thousand dollars. And um, our recommendation includes an increase of just shy of thirty two thousand dollars or eighteen and a half percent. And then finally, we'll look at unemployment insurance expense. And our recommendation includes a decrease of seventy nine percent or eighty eight thousand five hundred dollars. So when we jump into uh retirement contribution. So again, retirement contribution is comprised of um uh three areas. Um, the largest of which is the appropriation from the Essex Retirement Board. Um, the next largest is our employer, employer paid Medicare tax, and then finally. And um, the smallest component is our four oh three employer match. Um, so the driver of this category is the appropriation from the Essex Retirement Board. Uh, it's a number, it's a fixed cost. It's a number that we're given every year. In uh early December, the increase for Masco was uh thirty thousand five hundred eighty seven thousand dol. Dollars or an increase of three point seven percent. Uh, with respect to four oh three employer match. Uh, we're budgeting a three point six percent increase or a little over thirteen hundred dollars. Essentially, we have more people contributing to. Through the the four oh three B program, which generates um a matching component. Uh, which is embedded in uh all of our CBAs. Uh, in most of our. Individual contracts like mine, Mike's and Patty's. And then finally, a fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty three. Or four dollar or four point eight percent decrease in employer paid uh Medicare Medicare tax. Uh, the way that works is um, the employee pays one point four five percent of their covered. Salary um salaries and the district matches that one point four five percent. Historically, I've calculated that based on total compensation when in fact. I should be, I should have been taking out pre-tax stop dollars, including medical. Dental, life, FSA. So when I make that adjustment for the FY twenty three budget. It reduces the budget amount by a little over fifteen thousand dollars. So I've made that adjustment uh going forward. So the next category is transportation, regular ed. Uh, that cost category is one point one million dollars. Uh, we've incorporated an increase of forty four thousand two hundred and fifty nine dollars. Um, next year will be the final year of our three-year contract with NRT. Um, there's two components contractual increases in that number. One's really big, one's not so big. Um, the daily bus service component of the contract. The contractual increase for year three is a three point nine seven percent increase or a little over three thousand dollars. And then there's a contractual increase component for the late buses that we run two days a week. Um, basically, they, uh, in the contract, they increased their daily rate from eighty five dollars to ninety dollars per bus per day. Um, so that equates to a thousand eighty dollars or five point eight eight percent increase.
Uh, Jeff, given the. Issues companies have had getting drivers, increasing costs. Would you anticipate a larger increase when we go out for the new contract?
Uh, I do, and you'll actually see that. I'm I'm preparing an uh forecast uh for the next meeting for FY twenty four and.
A year for a multi-year.
A multi-year for just for Costa because on my bucket list to get Costa to approve a budget. Before I leave Masco. That's my goal.
Let's start with something small.
Huh? I shoot big. I shoot big. So, but seriously, yes, I I. I think in the forecast, I don't want to steal my thon- my own thunder, but um, I think I have a seven percent increase. Um, in the forecast for year one of the new five-year contract. I do think we'll benefit from a five-year contract uh for a lot of different reasons. Uh, but I do see um the cost of labor, right? The cost of fuel. So everything is through the roof right now.
And no competition.
Sorry, I was getting out of there.
And no. But his historically, that hasn't.
There hasn't been a competition.
Yeah, that hasn't affected us adversely, I don't think. Um, but but we'll see come this time next year, but I do think it'll be a lot higher than that.
Yeah.
And we still do that, we do that contract together with T T U?
We do, we do.
Okay.
Right. So and uh, we'll probably put it out to bid together maybe next December. Um, in May or June, I'll ask you permission to, as your procurement officer, I'm only able. By law to um, to seek a three-year contract. It's beneficial to for five, so I'll need your approval. So I'll ask your approval for, see with a five-year contract, they need to do the same, and then that's basis on which we'll proceed. Yep. Uh, next category is property liability and workman's compensation insurance. I'll take that in two categories. Property and liability together. I talked about that during the forecast uh back in January, so uh. We've had a really difficult uh unfavorable claims history here in the last couple of years. Right? We had that major lightning strike and then we had the burst. Um, sprinkler head in our main electrical room, right? And together. Those two claims were over three hundred thousand dollars. So when I went into. Or when we went into the FY twenty two process, uh, budget process. The plan was to put it out to bid, which I did, and I had no takers, not a single taker. So.
Did they think lightning was going to keep hitting us?
Uh, yeah, yeah. But the the district's been hit a number of times, so they look back at that, you know, long-term history as well. So. You know, I would, I was forced to stick with the current company and um. They hit us with a pretty significant increase that we talked about in the forecast. Um, in the current year. So our current year forecast is. Um, just for property and liability insurance is twenty six thousand three hundred dollars more than we budgeted for in the current year. And then on top of that, um, I've factored in a three percent increase for FY twenty three. So that's to those two things together. It's a thirty one percent increase. Which is a little over thirty thousand dollars. I'm gonna put it out to bid again. Just because I think that's the right thing to do, um, but I'm not sure if we'll have any takers again. Uh, we haven't had any other claims since last February. Uh, so we're training, trending in a favorable direction, but uh, we'll see and I'll let you guys know. What comes of that. Uh, workman's compensation insurance. Um, I factored in a two, two and a half percent increase, a little less than nineteen hundred dollars, which is what um. Our agent advised me to do.
Is that just based on increased payroll?
Yes, just payroll. We go through an audit every year. Uh, this year's audit checked out pretty favorably. We actually get a a little refund. Um, so uh. Nothing shocking there from a work perspective. Uh, in the three years I've been here, we haven't had any claims, so I don't have any concerns with the claims history there uh at the moment, at the moment. But the fourth category uh we'll unpack is uh unemployment insurance. So I've budgeted a uh, an eighty eight thousand five hundred dollar decrease compared to the current year budget. Um, so. Current, current year is a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollar budget. Uh, this, uh, and this recommendation is a twenty four thousand dollar budget. Um, if you recall last year, um, we had thirteen or fourteen classroom proctors on the payroll. And I was concerned that we were going to, you know, eliminate the positions at the end of the year. And then those folks, given the labor market at the time, those folks would have a hard time finding. Work would file claims and, you know, we prepared to cover those costs. Uh, I don't see that happening again. Um, conservatively, I've added um a couple of low-cost claims in the budget. Um, totaling twenty four thousand dollars for the the current year, but nothing specific to point to. Uh, so those are the four cost categories that I wanted to talk about tonight. Uh, we'll continue with this conversation um during the next um meeting on March second and we'll kind of unpack. Uh, the remaining categories and I'll talk about that at the end of the presentation. Uh, so the next segment of the presentation is talk about the school committee, uh, office operating budget. Carolyn asked us to take a look at that. So these are the components of the budget as they currently stand. Um, the first line is supports, support staff and clerical salaries. Um, little less than two, twenty two thousand dollars. Basically, that represents uh twenty percent of. Um, Jackie's salary for the executive assistant to the superintendent, who also supports the school committee. And the full salary of the school committee recording secretary, who happens to be Lynn at the moment. Uh, the next line item is a little over forty four thousand dollars for uh the SRO. Uh, that amount first. Found its way into the budget during the FY twenty one process, if you recall. Um, it was not, at the time was not included in the superintendent's recommendation. We went through deliberations. Um, there was um input from the uh, from the town of Boxford, uh, Board of Selectmen. And some members of the committee at the time uh supported the idea and we incorporated it, incorporated it into the final budget. And I included it in this office um because there was an available consultant's line.
I was wondering.
Yeah, so I mean, it could. It could reside here, it could reside in the business office, which is my office, budget office. It could reside in. The maintenance and security office, which at the time didn't have a consultant's line available. Um, so it can reside here or not. The most important piece is that it resides in the budget.
Well. If, you know, for that money to be spent, there needs to be an intermunicipal agreement. Among the towns to actually disperse that money. There is no agreement. There was no agreement last March for we're voting on the FY twenty two budget. To my knowledge, there's still no agreement. So why are we moving it forward if we can't. Uh, you know, disperse the money.
So I I don't. I, I don't necessarily agree with you that the money needs to be dispersed in connection with. An executed IMA. However, we did agree two years ago. That we would execute an IMA. So let's talk about the history a little bit, right? So I drafted an IMA. And I sent it to the three towns. So the agreement is, should be between the three towns. And the district for partial payment of an SRO. So we drafted, we drafted. A document, sent it to the three towns. Middleton. Pasta and Andy took that document and then parsed it into two documents. A one-year agreement. With the idea of a multi-year agreement. So the one-year agreement moved forward. We executed it in December of twenty twenty. Topsfield signed it. Middleton signed it. The sponsoring town never signed it. So, and we, we pursued it dozens of time. With, to no avail, right? Uh, concurrently, uh, you had asked Andy to take the lead on drafting the year agreement. Which Andy did. He shared it with me, at the time Alan and Kevin. I provided feedback and Kevin provided feedback and we never heard back from Andy. Uh, Alan, sorry. And then this went on through last July and then we all moved on. So, um. In the absence of an agreement, I will say that. The towns have been awesome and providing support every single day. Um, the support comes probably. Maybe split sixty forty between Boxford and Topsfield and Chief Ryder is. Kind of takes the lead in that regard. He's awesome to work with. And we have now the SROs that they do deploy here every day really do a nice job and are really a perfect fit for us. So.
They're submitting invoices for the time, correct?
Correct. They are submitting invoices.
And we're paying those invoices out of this line.
I am paying the invoices out of this line.
But.
So that's the history. I'll let you guys deliberate what we should be doing with.
When this first idea first came up by Boxford.
Correct.
You guys said, you know, we can't do it without an intermunicipal agreement.
That's my, that was, those were my words, yes.
Oh, then it was suggested, you know, that we included and into the budget, you know, and await, you know, the execution of an agreement. And that if there is no agreement, the money wouldn't be spent.
We never had that discussion.
Yes, we did. That was the basis, you know, and Dan is sitting there. He suggested it and those were his exact words.
So here's what I'll tell you. So in my opinion, just because we don't have a signed piece of paper, I'm not gonna tell the S R Os to go away. That's my opinion, right? And I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna make that decision every day, every single day of every day that I'm here. So if you guys wanna, I mean, I, I don't know what to tell you.
I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
Um, we have a new town administrator in Boxford, and I do believe some of this may be due to, I'll just call it turnover. So now that we have a new town administrator, Jeff, would you be willing to contact him or is this something?
No, this is really a town issue. This really isn't our issue and I've spent.
Middleton wanna contact, do you wanna tell, ask Middleton to contact Boxford?
You know, Boxford wanted this and it's a nice thank you, you know, to them since they are providing.
It's not, it's a, okay.
Because it, it doesn't.
It's not a thank you.
It, it, it doesn't re, it doesn't pay for the.
No, but it, so the intent of this, just to be really clear, was to provide partial payments or partial reimbursement to the towns, not necessarily just Boxford, that participated and deployed an S R O to this campus.
Correct.
That's what we agreed on, right? So.
Do we still have the language from the I M A you drafted? We still obviously would have it floating around, yes.
You guys, you guys.
I had to get it out of my email.
We presented and Carolyn signed.
The, the one.
One year back in December of 2020.
Alright, so I'm gonna ask this. Is there any motion on the table or can we just simply ask our liaisons to tell our town administrators, this was the I M A that was floating around? Can you guys pick it back up, please?
That's fine with me.
Let them.
Needs to be.
Be a little more specific than that. I mean.
No, I can, I can handle this.
Okay, okay.
I think it's pretty, I think I remember the email, I, I could find it pretty easily that I, like, I remember emails. We can find them again. We have very competent liaisons to all three towns that can just bump it to the town administrators. This is not their job. So unless there's a motion on the table, I'd like to do that and move on.
There, there was one, the one that was, you know, drafted by Andy that was, you know, Topsfield make amendment, you know, suggested changes. I don't know where that draft ended up.
Alright, so we can just put it back in their court and let them figure it out. Um, I had.
But remember, there's two things, right? So I drafted a long. No, I drafted one document that was supposed to go out twenty-five years, which is allowed by statute. Middleton took that document and took, made two documents. They created a one-year document, which this committee reviewed and signed. And then they created a multi-year document. The multi-year document was then shared with me, Kevin, Alan. After you guys, after Andy and company had incorporated, I provided feedback, Kevin provided feedback. Including a fair amount of feedback from Topsfield to your point, Costa. And then that went to Boxford uh, half a dozen times at least and never went anywhere. So there's a draft of a multi-year out there and there's a one year is terminated.
Find it. Alright, just before we move on, you had mentioned, I, I don't like the optics of the S R O being reflected in the school committee budget. It doesn't make any sense to me. I understand that that's your account structure, but I would like to request that you create another account so that it gets moved to a building and grounds or something more appropriate for security. Security, I guess, yeah, wherever security is.
Yeah, I can move it out of here if you guys want me to.
Yeah, I would like to do that. I totally support it. I just don't want it in here.
It's just hard to imagine a less appropriate place for it than here. I don't agree with that comment.
Maybe, maybe less imaginable, I guess. I'm looking at the list. Could be less appropriate. It's not meant to be an insult, but it's just.
I'll move it.
Yeah.
No problem. Yep, no problem.
For those of us, what is? S R O.
School resource officer. So every day.
Officer, yeah.
Every day we have.
Officer in school.
Okay. A train, a highly trained police officer.
Okay.
In that's, that space, deployed to the school district.
And the, the relationship they have at Masco is very supportive.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, it's really good.
It's a restorative to Joe Champa. You would like the way they do their work.
Okay, so the next line item is uh, legal services. Um, this is general counsel support, right? So it's Naomi and her team. This does not include our special ed council, which is in the special ed office. Uh, and that's $15,000.
That seems really low.
What's that, Melissa?
Really low.
Like, yeah.
Unfortunately, Naomi's retiring.
That might change.
Something to think about.
Right.
She's very reasonable.
Next line item is conferences and seminars, uh, $10,750. And that's made up of uh, $4,500 for the M A S C membership. $3,300 for the M A S C manual, policy manual work. And $2,950 for attendance at the annual M A S C conference and other related expenditures. And then the last entry, a thousand dollars is just miscellaneous consumable expenses available to the school committee.
So we should be having more snacks. Excuse me, sorry. There's no private, okay. Any other questions?
So my, the to-do, I'm taking away, my to-do is to move the, make the forty-four, six, twenty disappear from this.
And we have a to-do. We have.
Have a to-do.
About the agreement.
Alright. Okay, so moving on, section three of our discussion. So uh, during the January nineteenth presentation, there was a fairly robust conversation around additional resources that Carolyn kind of got going. Um, and then there was a lot of additional input and feedback and a request to provide information. So um, that's what we're doing tonight. So um, before we get into some of the detail, uh, like if you could flip the slide, just gonna review the assumptions that you asked us to make, right? And then I'm gonna go into how we've kind of categorized the information, then we'll get into the information. So three assumptions. The first assumption was, well, they're right or wrong. Uh, the pandemic and its impact on the district, on district operations will continue for the foreseeable future, future. Assumption two, identify additional resources needed to support district operations during the pandemic. And then assumption number three, identify additional resources needed to quote unquote free up of the executive leadership team. Okay, so our response is um, broken into two categories. Uh, the first categories is uh, shorter-term resources needed to support operations during the pandemic. Category two is a combination. It's longer-term resources needed to, one, support ongoing operations both during and after the pandemic, and two, free up mem, free up members of the executive leadership team to work on non-pandemic-related projects and strategic initiatives. Now the information. So category, again, this is the sh, short-term support during the pandemic. So these are the, in a perfect world, these were the, these would were the positions or additional resources that our team would have loved to have. And, you know, things, things have changed so rapidly. So, you know, what we were feeling and thinking a year ago was different than nine months ago, was different than even a month ago, right? When we had this conversation, we were in the midst of a, probably one of the worst surges, right? So I just say that to give, you know, the information some context. So let's go over the positions, the short-term positions, so.
Can I ask you a question before you start? Are these already, have you already allocated S R three funds to these? Have not. So that funding source.
It's just, that's, that would be my recommend, if you were, if we were to do it, that would be my recommendation where the money would come from.
Okay, and there's room in that or would you be reallocating S R three?
Be reallocated, yeah. We'd have to rework the plan and.
Based on what you know. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So two hallway calf, calf monitors. Um, we lack support in a big way. In our hallways throughout campus and, uh, and in particular, uh, in the calf during our for lunch period. Patty might weigh in if you wanna kind of add additional color. It's been a lot of talk about tutors, so a high school math tutor and a high school writing tutor. An additional nursing assistant at both the high school and middle school. We were fortunate enough to finally identify and hire and not be ghosted by a candidate, uh, who is a, a nursing assistant candidate to fill the open position at the high school that we've been desperately trying to fill for five months. We finally have a candidate and she's set to start on February twenty-eighth.
Mark, it's pushed out a little bit.
Sure it is.
Are you gonna go to her house and pick her up?
Yeah.
Please.
It's March.
Okay, March now, okay. So this is in addition to existing positions. Uh, so ideally, we'd love to have some additional um, nursing support to help us navigate through the waves. An additional athletic trainer. So we outsource our athletic trainer position. We have one athletic trainer on board right now. The pandemic has more than doubled the work.
There is a, a pretty.
Rigorous.
Defined, yeah, rigorous return-to-play protocol that students have to go through because of the potential heart issues with COVID, so they.
This person manages it.
Somebody has to manage that program to make that, that program to make sure our students are just coming right back into full practice on the first day back to school after being quarantined for in sick.
Oh.
So around the time of this request, this particular person who I speak to frequently was completely overwhelmed. And we were trying to throw as many resources at her to support her as, as we could. The next item, uh, now back in January and at other points during the pandemic, um, it's been really difficult to support absences or cover absences. It would be awesome to have five permanent, long-term substitute teachers. Right? So these aren't people that you call up every morning. These would be people, be people that we pay on the salary schedule per the C B A at master step two at $52,000 and they're here every day, all day.
For a hundred and eighty days.
All year.
Have you ever worked in a school district that had permanent, long-term subs?
I have, yes.
I have not.
Has Matt Chris ever had it, deployed anywhere needed?
It's, it's, it's a person that's gonna fill in the day sub apps, you know, what a typical day sub would do.
No, no, I'm just asking if you've ever, it makes a ton of sense to me. I'm just, yeah, because that person's super familiar with the environment, with the class, and you're gonna need.
It's more expensive than.
And you know they're gonna be.
Benefits involved.
That's great.
You know, because they are full-time. Um, so that's more expensive than the, you know, ninety bucks a day that you pay for a day sub.
Oh, I get that.
But then, but then the administration's not filling in.
Right.
Right.
So right now, we have five day subs on our call list, five.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Right? So when you have thirty people out and we don't have classroom proctors anymore, we, we have lots of gaps, right? So then we have to get super creative with, you know, teachers who are willing to.
Cover.
You know, cover, they cover, administrators cover. I mean, there was a point where we were all prepared. Everybody was prepared to cover classes. Cause we didn't know where it was going. But this would provide, really, if we could find the long-term subs, this would provide a pretty solid answer for that. Patty, if you wanna talk about school adjustment counselors.
Yeah, we've talked a lot about the S E L and the social emotional impact that the pandemic has had and then also our school adjustment counselors and their caseloads and how they're managing, you know, to keep up with the needs of the students. So so in this, um, we, I would love to add two school adjustment counselors. Again, this would be, um, you know, for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And it would be the duration of the pandemic and the S R three funds would um, fund those two necessary positions.
So I just wanna clarify something, that we're responding to your request, we're not asking for this, right? That, this isn't a request.
You're saying in an ideal situation.
In an ideal situation.
This was a question that was put to us.
Right.
What else would you, would you do?
Neither of these slides is us asking you for these positions, right? We're just responding to the, for the request for information.
Sure, just a, and I curiosity, has it ever been talked about in the, kind of the S E L support area, um, to hire a school psychologist? They would be able to do the counseling and they have executive functioning training and they have consultation training, just a little bit more versatile skillset?
We, we actually have it, Patty, but it is something to think about. Um, but we haven't really discussed that. Probably because in our mindset, um, our school psychologists are testing only. So that's kind of the model we have.
Yep.
So we don't have that model that you just described in that role. But it's something I think about.
So the last two, um, our, uh, our personnel, main offices have been absolutely overrun, been overrun with additional work, uh, particularly during uh, or after the holiday break where, you know, at-home testing became more commonplace than the P C R. And then people, I mean, we talked about the absenteeism rate, right? So people were calling the nurse's office. They couldn't get them, so then they would just bomb, bombarding.
A hundred and eighty-seven absent students calling the main office, high school.
Wondering why no one.
To report in, yeah.
Cheerly.
And meanwhile, everybody still has to do their job.
Their regular job.
Right? So in an ideal world, we would have had additional administrative or secretarial support. So these are the positions that we, the short-term positions that we identified.
That's one quick question.
Sure.
Go too far away from the adjustment counselor, just to, I was gonna piggyback on Patty's question. This would be, I mean, like, at least mental health, licensed mental health clinicians you're talking about though, that, or.
Sorry.
So she mentioned school psychologists, but when you say school adjustment counselors, I'm assuming that means licensed mental health clinicians. So they would still have a lot of similar type of training, just not a psychologist. They wouldn't be able to do some of the testing.
Correct. It would just be the mental health.
Just counseling, counseling focus.
I have another question about, yeah, this list. So would you take, I, I'm still a little, so these aren't in the budget. These are not in your original plan for how to spend S R three.
This is, and this is more than half of the money for S R three.
So would you, have you taken a look at your original list for S R three? Do the, are these not as important as what is in your list for S R three? Or should, should there be some swapping out?
So my answer today is different than when you asked a question on January nineteenth.
I didn't even think I asked this question, but I think I'm more the second version of this, but this is part of it. It's part of the whole.
Part of it.
Yeah.
So Mike, so what is for your existing list for how you're going to spend S R three? Would you reevaluate that and put some of these on it? Or are these things that just were beyond what you had room for in your S R three list? Cause I think you did that back in like October.
We did that back in September.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I'm just asking, like, if this all stuff sounds great, everything always sounds great when you're, like, given the world, can you do any of this with S R three?
We could do all of it with S R three.
All of it and it would.
But, but there's other stuff that you've already allocated.
Everything else that we said.
Right, so at some point, you need to evaluate.
Well, I would think you put the two together. I remember that, that list had like a hundred and something for cleaning that I'm not sure that we, like, I.
So that, that, that entry is for, for four day porters in our, uh, cafeterias and high-touch areas, which I would put even at a, a higher level of priority than some of these things.
They're here.
So some of this stuff, like, if you think that is needed for the next two years, to me, that makes it sound like that's needed like far into the future too, when you say things like that.
Potentially, yeah.
Cause I think we've realized that it's not touching that is causing the problem with passing.
There might be, I mean, I just opened up the S R three document to kind of look at them next to each other. And, I mean, there are a lot that you wouldn't wanna bump, but there are a couple, I mean, like the COVID coordinator, that we never were able to find somebody.
Right.
That's fifty grand.
That was fifty-four, yeah, so.
I mean, could you replace, you know.
I don't know.
Touchless, you know, flushometers and hand washing and, you know, scale back on replacement iPads for three years out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess you'd need, you need to, when you have time, prioritize, right? Decide what's more important to you and, and.
Well, it's not, I guess it's not what's important just to us, right?
Okay, I, I mean, I've always wanted to have a little bit of a say in how the S R three funding was, but you guys kinda took it.
That was the request for S R three, right, is that you, you, I mean, you personally pushed for that level of involvement and then asked this question. So I, my expectation was that if, if we were gonna change the S R three grant, that we would do it together.
Okay.
And this is a nice talking point to make some adjustments, cause that was kind of said it was flexible when you first presented.
Right.
And that it's very changeable and it seems very relevant, I mean, just based on conversations we've had and.
But we're just missing like what.
Yeah.
Will actually fit in S R three, which is kind of.
This changes, it changes so quickly to the last point. You know, so do we need another athletic trainer now? I, I don't know.
What if we get another surge in six weeks?
We will, I mean, so that's the.
But the assumption is that it'll be here for a long time.
Right.
Right, that's why I listed the assumptions that you asked me to make.
Years worth.
Yeah, what I was trying, my question, which I know a lot of people contributed other questions with, my concern is that, is basically the answer you're about to give us. So that, that was my focus, like, how do we free up your time? That's what I wanna know. I, and I know this all relates, so, but my.
But this is part of that answer, right? Because we're doing.
Doing parts of this too.
We're doing parts of this.
Yes, some.
But this is, so the answer is two parts.
Right.
It's the short-term resources. And now there's the long-term, because it's part of the, it's together, it's the answer.
Okay, alright.
There you go, that's it, yes.
Mind if I just make one more comment?
Yeah, go for it.
Other slides. One is, I'm just, as we're looking at the next piece of it and then looking at the whole S R three, I'll be curious to figure out how, what the best approach is to prioritizing, so that if we did wanna, like, cause I think of, of the ten people in this, ten committee members in this room, you know, we might all pick two different things that are our personal most important. I know if Tasha was here, she had communicated before this meeting that she's really interested in getting the tutors, right? I really would love to see, it doesn't, someone else might be more focused on the athletic training. Figuring out a process for helping to prioritize.
And you're, and then you're quickly at seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars plus.
More than half of the.
Twenty-two, potentially twenty-two thousand dollars per, per person and benefits.
Right.
And the, um, I'm just curious, can the substitute teachers be tutors? Do they have to be different people? I mean, could you have someone come in and they're this all-purpose, you're a sub or you're, you're gonna be available to tutor?
I think, my opinion is they have to be one or the other, because if we deploy them as a, to fill in a classroom, they're not available to tutor.
This would be during the day too.
Right. And I, you know, and that's part of the question of, is that a really valuable use of the resource? How many kids can a tutor see in a day recently? Probably not. You know, so go one, one better on you. Is that an effective use of fifty thousand dollars? Or should you put it into more teaching staff to lower class sizes? You know, and it's just, you could keep going with this as long as you want.
The difference being, this is S R money versus, versus operating, but.
But, yeah, S R money runs out.
Runs out.
And if, you know, people have gotten used to these things, then the S R money runs off, but we can't do away with these positions that were being found by the S R money. So then how do you fit another seven hundred and.
And that.
Eight hundred and fifty.
And that's exactly why we stayed away from.
People for the S R three.
These kinds of things are planned.
And, and, and that, you know, at the meeting with the town, Chincoms, that issue was raised about, you know, don't spend, you know, the grant funds on things that are.
Don't go away.
Right.
But there, but to the, to the counterpoint would be that there, there's a lot of crisis happening right now. And the hope would be that when the S R money runs out, we'll at least have gotten past the extreme. The needs won't be gone, but it might not be quite as acute as it is, as it is right now for a couple of these.
That's why I labeled these as short-term pandemic.
Yeah.
Only resources, right? Because it, it, let's say if we were, if we were to do the majority of these things, it would be done on the basis of them being short-term, right? So they.
I don't, I don't see, it, it's not an assumption that just because we're using the money for people, that somehow the universe is going to demand that they stay and have to work theirself into the operating budget. That's not.
Well, it depends, it depends on the, on the position, so let's flip to the next slide, that's a great segue, right? So, you know, in my opinion, you can't hire a director of curriculum and instruction.
On a short-term basis.
On a short-term basis and get a really great person, right? You're gonna need to make a long-term commitment to that person. And their supervisor and the existing leadership is gonna have to make a long-term commitment to that person in the form of an investment in them, right? To get a return on them, right? So, you know, you're not gonna get somebody, Bill.
No, no argument, you don't even have to make it, I'm not gonna argue that.
Right, yeah.
I got other things to argue about.
Right, right. So these are, these are longer-term positions, um, identified to cover those two assumptions that I talked about earlier, right? Free up resources, Carolyn, which I think was the basis of your request.
That is the basis.
Right, and then, um, you know, other positions to cover operations. So we've got a director of curriculum and instruction, this isn't the first time you've seen that, right? A director of business operations and administration, a district-wide communications manager at a hundred thousand dollars, a transportation coordinator. I mean, right now, we're piecing it together in an absolute nightmare, and it's not working. Two years ago, we eliminated an M P F T and an I T technician. And we are paying the price right now for it. So these are the positions that, you know, if we were to create a list of permanent positions to be invested in, funded through it, the general fund, at some point, um, this would be that list. So again, we're not, we're not requesting positions at the, at the moment.
Really? The pandemic did not happen, so we were like, put yourself back and specifically Mike, put yourself back to when you first started and you did your, your plan, your entry plan and you met with everybody and you gave us your plan and you were going to start working on a detailed strategic plan, supporting Vision twenty twenty-five. And you were just about to start doing it. And then all your time since then and Jeff's and everybody's has been dealing with what we kept thinking at the time was a short-term pandemic thing. So you haven't had a chance to do that and we haven't had a chance, along with that was the capital plan for any capital-related items that we need. At that time, I didn't hear that you couldn't do a plan without having these roles. Um, and I, I totally agree, it would be great to get these. I, I, I've, I've seen the need over the years, I, I'm not surprised to see anything on here. But I don't think we were under the impression that we wouldn't get a strategic plan unless we hired all these people. So I, I'm trying to figure out, if we can't hire these people, how do we get you back to the capacity that you thought you had in twenty nineteen to do a strategic plan?
And the capital plan.
And the capital plan.
That's not what you asked, though.
Well, no, what I said is, no, actually, that is what I meant. And what I meant was, we've been, want a strategic plan for Vision twenty twenty-five. I know you guys want a strategic plan for Vision twenty twenty-five. That was one of the reasons we, when we did a superintendent search, that we hired Mike. And you haven't had any time to do it. And I, I think what I said was, I, what do you need so that you don't come back and tell us six months from now that you don't have any time to do a strategic plan? That, that was my question, and that's exactly what I did say.
I need a clone.
What did, so I guess I'm asking, like, should we have realized that back in twenty nineteen?
Three years ago and that, I just, so. I guess that what I'm kinda struggling with on this is those things, you know, the pandemic things are, are real and always there and they're not something you can farm out to somebody else. The time that those decisions take and the, the oversight that you need to have has, has to be direct on them.
Has to be the superintendent.
Yeah. It has to be, it's not.
But it's not just the superintendent.
I understand that, but I'm focusing, I gotta focus on you right now.
Example, our principals have been trying to figure out how to get test kids, two kids, for the last two weeks. They're the ones that have to actually operationalize and make all that work and get that all to happen. There's nobody they can, they can, yes, farm out putting labels on boxes to people, but actually operationalizing the whole thing has to happen, you know, from, from a higher level. And so that's really what's been going on, you know, making the decision to go into that program was something that the five of us had to really talk through and say, okay, are we gonna do this? And how are we gonna make it all work? So, and every time we, every time we do something, that's the process that goes in. So that's why I said it's a clone, it's, it's somebody else that actually has.
But listening to you, it sounds like you need a whole other management team.
Yeah, and I mean, that has the actual, but also has the authority and then I have to know what's going on through all of these things, cause we get questions about them and I can't say, I don't know.
But just to clarify, so the, the, what you guys are saying is that if among these six roles here, there's that, that, that someone on this page would then be able to do that sort of stuff, so that the capital planning and the strategic planning could get your attention?
Eventually, yes.
Eventually, yes, but then, again, it would take time to get those people up to speed to where you could actually say, okay, you got this, go do it and come back and tell me about it.
Cause I.
You know, just even that director of curriculum and instruction, that's a position that I would expect to spend hours with.
But, but, I mean, that, that one in particular, you know, my, my.
Because we have.
Is someone doing that now?
Not, not to the, not as good as it could be.
Well, right, so if no one's doing it now, then that can't be a reason why you're not getting something else done. You see my point? I mean, if you were to tell me that you were doing that.
Tell you is the level, the quality of curriculum and instruction in this, in this building, these two buildings are lacking and they could be way better than what they actually are.
Um, I certainly wouldn't argue with, I, 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 I agree, but that's, again, that's, that's, I guess.
That's the one with that position, is it gonna free my time up? No.
Right.
But the last page would free some of your time up, if we had some more support services.
I think a combination of both pages would free both. Some in the short term, some in the long term, you know.
So let me just say that.
We're just gonna have to accept the status quo.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, like, I'm even thinking of things like, so we're technically still doing testings this week. Up until last week, there was an administrator from, from either here or the, the T T U onsite every morning at six fifty till eight thirty covering test and stay. Cause there was nobody else to do it and we didn't try, we couldn't trust the testing company at that point to do it by themselves. We actually got somebody new two weeks ago, which was all another piece of work that took another half a dozen phone calls and conferences and everything else. They came in and actually pretty competent and they threw us out, which was nice, but.
But then you and I set up the test and save program.
Program with them.
And managed it throughout, from September to January.
Yeah.
Right, and that took hours every day.
Right.
And you're saying there's nobody else that could have done that, is what you're telling me?
No.
Well, I just wanna add that, that in the response and, and your category two, the question I thought we were asking and the response I was seeking was, we need the strategic planning and the capital planning done. I don't bloody care who does it, I just, I want it done and I want it done well. And right now, it's not getting done. So ideally, freeing you guys up to do that would seem to make the most sense, but it certain, it's, it sounds like that's actually not feasible. It, the need's not going away, so we somehow have to figure out. And maybe it's, it's not by using long-term resources, but we've gotta figure out a way to get that, those two things at least kicked off. Because we can't keep kicking that can down the road. It's, it's, it's impacting our discussions with the towns about, you know, budgeting. And that's only going to get worse.
Yeah, it's. If we don't have a capital plan in place or the start of it by next budget season, it's gonna be very ugly at the town level. People are, people, um, there was a lot of frustration from the, from our town.
Yep.
And then at least a distrust.
Madam Chair, there's somebody.
A distinguished guest.
Don't take them public, I'm sorry, Dan. I think we should be consistent. So I was gonna ask if there's anything on these lists. So that example of the curriculum instruction isn't something, is there something here that you are doing, are spending a lot of time on? Like specifically?
Well, you're doing the transportation, right, right, Jeff?
Or is that, or is that the, the principal?
She's, Mary Jo is the bus, the bus coordinator, but there's a whole bunch of other things I had done too by me.
Right.
What is the communications person doing? What would they do?
Yeah, it's a very broad term, I'm just wondering what would their, what would that be? What would the focus be?
So if the pandemic was still raging, which is the assumption, right? They would assist with all the communications, they would improve communications, they would.
That would be helpful.
Set up dashboards, that, that kinda stuff.
Website, yeah, all of that.
Right.
I mean, that's certainly a D, that also has been discussed for maybe years, so there's, none of these, none of these things are.
Or no, should come as a surprise.
Right, absolutely not.
So I took Carolyn's question two, two meetings ago as a way to like, like, help us help you. And I don't want it to seem adversarial, cause we all need to work together to move forward and whatever, backwards and then forward and backwards and forward, we're on a seesaw. So if you had to pick tasks that you could, see, and I understand that in order to set up some of these tasks is gonna take work, it's, so it's, it's, it's not like you hire transportation coordinator and then it goes away, like, all of a sudden, you're like, oh, great, day one, I don't have to handle this. I know it's a time thing, but if we can do some of these things now, temporarily, and sort of anticipate.
What do you mean?
Like.
We can't talk in generalities, right?
So that's.
Like, if there's something, if there's certain tasks that we can focus on to take them off your plate and and come up with a solution for that, that we can put into the budget or use S R funds from.
And Melissa can't, and none of us can get specific about what the test, because we don't know how you spend your day.
Yeah, and.
Well, oftentimes, we don't know how we're gonna.
Oh, yeah, is that, is that, that's, yeah, that's, and again, that's kind of what I, what we're wrestling with on this too, is that, is that, you know, in a couple of minutes, I'm gonna show you the the chart of, you know, cases again. I'm the one who keeps that spreadsheet, myself. You know, I'm the one who's actually pulling the number, pulling the names off a list. And I have a spreadsheet that, you know, has all the names and dates and everything else that, because I get the information from Julia Lobel as part of the communications process. Has, will that slow down? Yeah, I think so, you know.
You just jinxed this.
But, yeah, knock on wood. And, you know, I'll report, you know, that the trend is going the right way right now. But, you know, and it was, but it was the same way in October, and I was like, oh, wow, okay, now I can actually start doing some other things. And then Thanksgiving came back, and I was like, well, that stuff's all around again, you know. And so it's trying to get into a rhythm, and it's really, you know, I've said this earlier, like, retraining myself not to be in crisis mode.
Yeah.
As part of it, that, you know, yeah, you're just kind of waiting for something to drop on you. Pretty much, you know, there's, I've said this, said this a little while ago, I'm living in like two-week blocks right now.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's sort of like meeting to meet, school committee meeting, school committee meeting, because the game changes every two weeks. And that's, that's, I think, where we're kind of wrestling too of like, you know, what could I tell you that I could stop doing? Just, I don't know.
You're still in the acute period right now, it sounds like you need some breathing.
This is still crisis management is what we're doing right now.
But we're also producing.
Also producing the day-to-day stuff.
All the other things that we have to get done, that the list would blow your mind, right?
You know, we're gonna talk about two contracts here, there's hundreds of hours that it took us to get.
The three of us participated in, yeah.
And that's why we took, that's why we set some of the things that would normally happen aside. Right, the, what she was, Carolyn was saying, like, the capital planning, the.
I mean, those are the big important things that, that, yes, we should be working on, but it's just, you know, it, it, the, the urgent important things are right now taking.
Of course, they kind of, it's like having a newborn.
Cubbies four quadrants, you know, we're working in the urgent important stuff right now.
And I have to say, I think we've also tried to express that to our towns, I think they did get that eventually, you know.
I mean, for two years, we've been spending forty hours a week or more responding to the pandemic, and then forty hours a week at night and at weekends doing our day jobs.
Yeah, and we've, and we've defended.
It's been years of that.
Yeah, I know, and we don't like it, we don't like seeing that.
I'm just, I'm just wanting everybody to understand that, and it hasn't slowed down.
No, and so the whole point of the question was, that is awful, that stinks. I don't, what if it doesn't go away? And I, I guess what I'm hearing is, unfortunately, at this point, the way we're structured, that everything needs to be, all the day-to-day changes have to be addressed by you guys because they are that important.
Right.
And therefore, until it calms down, I don't know, I I still would like to hopefully.
Just aren't that many resources, Carolyn, that we have on our teams.
Yes, I know, so.
Nobody, there's really nobody.
If what would you like for resources that would resolve the problem? That's, you know, I feel like we're talking in a.
If you had to take a small piece, just one small thing that we.
Give me an MPFT and an IT tech back. In all seriousness, I, I, I wake up at night worried about being able to have the lawns mowed. Eighteen acres of grass for all the athletic teams. I lie, I'm not fooling around, right? We have four MPFTs right now, we can't staff all the overtime.
I thought we had five.
We had five, we have four, we're down to four.
Wait, we didn't eliminate.
We eliminated a full-time MPFT. We went from five to four.
I thought we went from one, right?
No. One, one quick point in listening to this and and, you know, no one around this table, or I think even listening, would 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 dispute how you guys have been flat out and have performed above and beyond the call of duty and, you know, we could never thank you enough for that. But when I see a title of Director of Business Operations and Administration, somehow I think if we got that person, that that perhaps, I mean, not on day one, but maybe on day thirty or four sixty, that, you know, that person might be able to absorb some of that's on your plate. Without a doubt. So all these things would be great, but but perhaps that one might actually put a dent in the administrative or all the stuff that's consumed by you guys.
And Joe has.
My biggest concern would be finding the person. I mean, it's taken, it took us five months to hire Jonathan. It took us five months to find a narcissist, right?
And he's working on his resume probably.
Is our only option to hire people directly?
Say again?
Our only option to hire people directly to do this stuff? I'm just thinking that at work, if we run into this kind of situation, we go look for some temporary help. And we, we, you know, for something like groundskeeping, you know, can you hire a landscaper? Can you, you know, is is that an option in 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 the situation? We have to add people on staff.
It would be extraordinarily expensive.
But it's temporary, and we've got this S R funding.
But to me, that's, that's on the play, that's on the permanent list, right? That the fact that we have eighteen acres of grass that needs to be mowed isn't gonna go away.
Yeah, but you're saying right now your time's being spent trying to figure out who's gonna mow the damn grass, so. So we we bring in this, you know, we pay a little extra using this temporary funding, emergency funding, it's what it's for. And, you know, we, you can go get an IT person that way too, I'm I'm sure, you can IT temp persons. You know, why, why wouldn't we consider something like that?
I guess my reaction would, because because it's a permanent need.
Yeah, that doesn't go away.
Yeah. I hear you, but because it's a permanent need, the fact that if we flip back to the previous sheet. Nursing assistant, right, once the pandemic has, is either over or has significantly dissipated. That that's a short-term need, that would go away. You know, the demand on the nursing department would decrease significantly. In sharp contrast to the fact that, you know, the lawns still need to be mowed.
I have one, one last thought from me to think about is, so I'm thinking about the things that are like taking you away daily, and they do all relate to addressing to changes with the pandemic. If you were to find a trusted COVID expert that could, you know, has experience in this and can figure out handing out tests and can sub for testing, can set up a new testing protocol, can figure out, like, if all of a sudden we have to wear masks again, or if we drop them, or like, we have to do new distancing or whatever. If you had someone that could, that you trusted, because I know the reason you're doing it now is because you don't have anyone that you trust. If you can find someone like that, would that help? Is that the piece of Mike that we, like, can clone?
So after we replace Steve Burt, who's leaving Friday.
Right.
Right, so now we, so we're, I know that doesn't answer your question, but I'm, I'm losing, we're losing trusted resources.
Right.
What are you saying?
I didn't know he was leaving.
Yeah, he resigned.
He resigned. Friday's the last.
I didn't know that, that's why I, Melissa, we know that, so I'm sorry.
Staffing model's in constant flux, right? So we're losing a trust, a very trusted important position from the district, which is gonna have to, you know, in addition to losing an assistant superintendent, which is taking.
Okay, so I know that will take your time, I I understand that. I I'm, so that's a, that's hopefully a multi-month, but not multi-year project to fill those roles.
Whatever it takes, we'll do it.
All right, so not, no interest in having someone take over the COVID stuff from you guys?
I guess I, I don't know that that I could wave a wand and just have somebody do all that stuff, and it would just take all the time away.
How about most of it, though? I I think it's a matter of if you had the right person, I mean, like, you probably, before you had Jeff.
I think that wherever that person would be, would still be in my office at all, you know, for a certain amount of time. Saying, hey, Mike, I'm gonna do it this way, how does it sound to you? And and I wouldn't want to relinquish that kind of oversight, because you wouldn't expect that of me. Because when something goes south, you're gonna come to me. And I better need, and I would need to know how things were going and why, why they happened the way they did, so that I could explain it all to to you and to parents. It's not something where you can just go, you just take this, I'm doing it, and then you do that.
Well, I.
Because I.
I, I, then I.
Test you with my life. After ten years, yeah.
It sounds like you kind of put out there kind of like the ideal, like the wish list of things that make things better.
Yeah, this is.
It's to take time after this discussion to think about, like, triaging, what would, like a priority list of what would be the most immediate helpful thing and and coming back to that.
I, but I don't, even if they call this, I'm not hearing that we're getting a strategic plan, I'm not hearing that.
I'm just saying, the first step is to kind of triage the need and and make a goal to, you know, get those supports in place to frame up. So there's a lot here, could it be condensed, you know, to something realistic?
My sense was that they, correct me if I'm wrong, that when you guys were building this, like, that that was what they wanted to try to give us. But there wasn't really any way to do that yet, but maybe after, well, now that, you know, I've been this.
About it.
You know, what I heard is, there was kind of two things, you know, there is the higher level things of, you know, deciding how to set up the testing program. You know, and then there's some lower level stuff, like, you know, putting together, you know, you know, spreadsheets and the charts about the COVID cases. You know, that part, I would think if you had a body that knew how to do spreadsheets.
They have it here, main office support.
Well, that's for the high school.
Assistant.
Good point.
Right, so the, I I understand why you would want, it'd be hard to delegate that higher-level stuff. But the lower-level stuff that still takes time should be able to be delegated. And, you know, then, you know, maybe, you know, when it's COVID is spiking, they're doing, you know, doing, spending more time doing the charts, you know, when they are, it's, you know, lesser, you know, doing something else. So sort of, sort of like a multitask person that is not doing the higher-level things, but is able to provide in, you know, lower-level support that either, you know, that allows you to make those, you know, decisions without going crazy. Oh, and maybe gives you enough bandwidth to think about the other things.
Kind of, that's one other thought, the position Bill highlighted of the Business and Operations Administration, because I see that on the long-term options, but, and I know the reason for that is because you thought, you're thinking, nobody would apply for a job like that, knowing it's short-term, although.
We wouldn't want to make the investment of time in training somebody to actually do all that, and then say in a year.
Investment.
I mean, it would take a year, an investment of a year.
To get that person.
To get that person up to speed.
So I don't think we're gonna have any resolutions out of this right now. I think we just, yeah.
Yeah, we weren't expecting it, I'm just responding to what we thought the question was, but.
All right.
I think we gotta see. Just to, I guess, put a bow on it, so do you think that there's
Pretty bow.
Any of that? Those two specific requests around the capital plan, the strategic that that none of that could, or is there any of that that an external consultant could do? An external consultant would have to rely on me to. Not, I mean, not one, you know, worth, worth their, what they get, wouldn't be picking your brain twenty-four seven, make it periodically. I'm just saying, it's, it's, I mean, that option came to mind, certainly it might, I'm not saying it would be terribly less expensive than than hiring someone, but but the bottom line is, the work's gotta get done somehow, and sooner rather than later.
I I could imagine that with capital, some parts of it, I know that they would need to come to you for a lot of data.
And some parts of it.
I think that that's probably the same with with the strategic plan as well. I think the other piece I'm concerned about also with the strategic plan is it's going to take time from other people in the organization. And I worry about their capacity at this point to really engage as well.
Well, but that's an argument for not doing a strategic plan at this point, and I'm, I'm not sure that's the sentiment of.
No, I don't.
I mean, but it's, it's a fair.
It's a concern I have, you know, we're trying to get people who are paying to do P D. They're not, they're not engaging. If I ask somebody to come for a two-day rah-rah session in the summer, how many people are gonna actually voluntarily commit?
You know, then let's hire a consultant that wouldn't have a two-day rah-rah thing in the summer. I mean, you know, there were, there are more than one ways to skin a guy, okay? So.
All right, I think we should move on.
Moving on, all right, so the last section of the discussion tonight was, request not included in our recommendation. So this is a little excerpt from my Budget Kickoff memo in in November, and you can clearly see that we we ask the audience, which is more than thirty members of our team, to focus on developing a budget and focus on providing information to us that's important to allow us to plan for the future and to look at new things, right? So that's what we did, and we didn't get a whole lot of feedback from from our leadership team. So Mike, if you flip the next two slides, make up the requests that received, the majority of which came from me. So Mike, I'll let you talk about the first three, and then I'll cover the rest of them.
So you see, we've already had this discussion about director of curriculum assessment and instruction, and it's one of the, it's the one area not have a district level or cabinet level administrator who is overseeing, and that's our mission. You know, teaching and learning, and so there's no, you know, direct, you know, no person with direct oversight over that specific area in in our org chart at this moment. And then we also talked to, we also talked a little bit about the math and writing tutors, that those were positions that were, you know, requested for the high school. And we have talked about, you know, showing up on the the list of possible S R funds. And as I said, you know, there's some questions about whether, you know, that's a most effective use of the resource that we would put out there.
For sure, for new, for new administrative or support positions, at the time, I incorporated a seasonal part-time MPFT to focus grounds, athletic fields, mowing and lining, a part-time IT technician. So this was prepared three months ago, to, you know, varies a little bit, a little bit from what we just talked about. A part-time IT technician to help support our current team, who's also down twenty-five percent. We eliminated one position for those that weren't here, we have three techs right now. And then, again, the idea of a dedicated transportation manager. Categories three and four, category three was new instructional program costs, there were no requests going to that category, and then category four. And then category four was extraordinary one time costs. The first entry is is focused on the, we call it the fishbowl. Right on the corner of the link, repurposing and outfitting that room. To better equip equip it for. More versatile instructional space. Right now it has three fixed. I'll call them desks, but they're more like tables that kind of take up the majority of the space. There was some discussion. I guess years ago, Mike. I don't know if we had engaged the M E F and some ideas. Around that space, so we thought it was important to put it back under the list. And then the next two six entries. Come from my space. Again, so the next entry is. What I would call step two. Of a reduction in our user fees. So in the current, the current recommendation. Got a twenty five percent reduction. As you've heard from us in the past. The idea of our fees being twice. Twice as high as other. Other school districts and the local area. So this entry would. Reduce the fee structure by another twenty five percent. And then equipment. Plow truck. A grounds vehicle. Athletic field line striper, a commercial lawn mower. And athletic training trainer safety vehicle. With the exception of a couple of pieces of equipment, the majority of our our equipment is anywhere from. Ten to twenty years old. So that makes up the list of. The things that were requested that didn't find their way into the recommendation.
Would any of these things reduce the load? On. Anyone in the administrative administration at this point? Would they have a any, I guess. More than a negligible impact?
Any of these things?
Yeah.
In categories.
That's out. Yeah.
Or one through four, I guess, probably, right?
Yeah, two.
Both pages.
Yeah, to both pages.
I would say back to our the discussion that we just had, you know, the majority of those things in category two. So wrap it up. Next meeting. So. If there will be any changes to our final recommendation, they'll come at our next meeting. I'm hoping to get. Final rates on health and dental premiums. And get those reflected into the recommendation. And then. The plan is to cover the remaining offices that we haven't talked about, including M I S, maintenance, security. And athletics, and then we'll talk about the F Y twenty four forecast that I've prepared.
If the new rates end up. Being less than what you had put in the budget, so like it reduces.
It would fall to the bottom line.
Yeah, so rather than falls to the bottom line. Can you take a look at the stuff that you didn't put in and consider putting those in, like the I T part time and the.
Yep.
Part time M P F T part time.
So what I'll do, Carolyn, is. Let's say there's two or three things that come through in the next couple of weeks. I'll incorporate them into the recommendation.
Okay.
And then call them specifically and then call out the change. Especially if it's favorable, and then we can circle back to some of these things.
Okay, thank you.
With the Director of Curriculum. You know, that's been something that, you know. Has been, I wish we could have, you know, even, you know, prior. Your superintendents. So how did you make the decision? To omit that, but to include the first cut in the fees?
I think that position is something. That. We we need going forward. However, there's, you know, it becomes a capacity issue where we already are turning over one assistant superintendent position. We're onboarding a brand new high school principal this year. You know, it it at some point, it becomes a question of how many, how many teams can we actually withstand at once? I also think the fees were, you know. Were pretty loud. Publicly that that parents want to see some movement on that and, you know, I think going through last year's budget process, we said, do what we could to address it. So.
Okay, I mean, it seems to me that if your if your. Independent observation is that our athletic and co-curricular fees are. Twice what they they should be, then. Seems to me that's kind of a makes it a priority that we stress that to the extent that we can.
Right. And that was exactly our observation.
Well, I also think it's. In my opinion, responsible of you to think of it that way, to not have too much change with the administration, because I've worked in districts that have. Many, many changes, and it creates chaos for years to come. So. I appreciate that. I think that's a responsible way of thinking about, you know, just taking things in a systematic way. And when it's the right timing. So that they're properly trained.
So I think I would love to see what a budget would look like if we added back in. An M P F T, an I T tech, and the nursing staff.
Basically, the people we cut at the beginning of the pandemic.
I know the nursing, the nursing assistants, we can, you know, they're proposed to be out of S R funding. But I think some of those things are short term. What I'm hearing is those may be able to serve short term needs with training. And I know that I know that the information changes like that. And you could come in at at seven and have a memo at nine that changes the world. I I recognize that, but. I think that those particular positions may be able to have a bigger impact than. That's what I'm hearing. And, you know. Hindsight is twenty twenty and. You know, we had to make tough decisions that for fiscal twenty one twenty one. So.
I appreciate what you're saying, like based on the conversation we had before, because basically it's the like intellectual capital that those positions. Don't need that some of the other positions we're talking about would need to know. Be able to use their discretion in a lot of things. But some of these are more technical jobs that you could just say. I need this job done. I need to trust you to be able to discern the nuance.
What I wanted to.
Exactly. So that's a really wait, a nice way of thinking about it. Appreciate you mentioning that. So did you take that note for?
So for March second, I'm gonna take next week off because I need a vacation. So I'm gonna make any final changes from March second. And then we can go from there. That's that's my plan for. So then we then we can see how what the changes. What the effect of the changes are on the recommendation, and then the school committee can advise us and. So I can do scenarios and it's very quick. But that's what I'll have for the second.
That sounds perfect. Thank you. That's really good. Anything else we can move along from budget? Thank you. That was a lot, but I appreciate it. And I think. I think I hope these conversations are helpful, really, because. We get to hear you and you get to see that we're trying to help. Good, right? I can. I can move us along. On mic.
So this is good. And do that.
So superintendent's report for this meeting. So first off, I'm happy to report that as of nine o'clock this morning, it actually went all the way today. Yay.
We had no reported COVID cases in the last week. Remember, that's those are reported cases that, you know, our PCR tests. Come through public health. The number we reported to Desi today was zero for the last week. So that's the first, and we've actually only had three total cases in the period since my last report on February second. So that's the last week marks the first week of zero reported cases since the beginning of November of twenty twenty one. As I said, we have had a change here, as Jeff kind of remarked. That we've gone towards more towards home tests, and those don't get reported into the public health system. As Phil said, mentioned earlier, though, we are seeing. Good, you know, good attendance rates, you know, what we would normally have expected for a pandemic. So we are seeing the case numbers. Trending in the right direction. So we've also begun participation in our in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's at home testing program. In this program, any student or staff member who opts into the program will be provided one at home COVID rapid COVID test kit. Every other week for as long as Desi continues this program. Right now, they've promised it through April vacation. Let's see if they're continuing after that. Yesterday, we began distributing test kits to one hundred and sixty six faculty members who signed up to opt into the program. And tomorrow afternoon, we'll distribute test kits. To two hundred and sixty seven high school students and one hundred and fifty six middle school students who opted in. That's twenty six percent of our total population. For students. And all that's five hundred and eighty nine students and staff who have signed up for the for this program. And the parents and faculty members can still opt into the program, and the link's gonna be in my blog again. But if you opt in at this point, you won't get your test kit until the week of February twenty eighth. That's the, so it'll be every two weeks we'll distribute. So. When we come back from April vacation. We're asking that any. That people use one of those two tests that we're giving out this week. Sunday, February twenty seventh, as we come back from February break. Anyone who receives a positive result is asked to report this to the school, and there's a link to a positive test notification form as well. And on to mask mandate update. So as I reported to the school committee on February second. I had a phone conversation with Dr. Dick Taylor, Chair of the Boxford Board of Health on February fourth. In this conversation, I asked Dr. Taylor to have the Boxford Board of Health. Consider exempting mask enament from Boxford's emergency face covering order beginning on March fourteenth. That's what we discussed here on February seventh. Dr. Taylor responded that the board would consider this request at their next meeting that's taking place and already took place, I assume, now tonight. Wednesday, February ninth, I received notice from Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed that statewide mask mandate for all K to twelve schools would end effective February twenty eighth. Beginning on the twenty eighth, masks will be optional for all students and staff in schools that do not have a local mask requirement. As part of this new advice from Desi, masks will still be required in some in the following situations. An individual who tests positive for COVID nineteen. Returns to school following their five day isolation period. Went around others other than when eating, drinking, or outside through day ten of exposure, and that's from Desi's guidelines. An asymptomatic, unvaccinated individual returns to school following a five day quarantine period. Went around others other than when eating or drinking or outside through day ten of exposure. And again, that's per Desi's guidelines. And then any individuals riding on school transportation vehicles, and that's in compliance with the federal order. So that those are the three times. People will still have to be masked. After I received this new information from Desi. I amended my request to the Boxer Board of Health to consider a waiver from the emergency face covering order beginning on February twenty eighth. I've confirmed that the request will be considered tonight. Once I hear from Boxer Board of Health regarding their decision. I'll update the mask enament community with next steps.
They lifted the mask order.
What's that?
They lifted.
An animus. As of?
Today, immediately.
As of like an hour ago or.
Oh, no, did they?
End of meeting.
Wow.
The whole town of Box.
They took the whole towns off?
Yeah.
Okay. Didn't see that coming.
Dropped it.
I make a motion that we can take these off?
Well, there's still the.
I think we need to have confirmation.
Desi is still to the twenty eighth, so.
Yeah. Okay, so with those guidelines, Mike, just presented.
Yep.
With regard to close contacts, with regard to people that are vaccinated and and. Asymptomatic. We follow those guidelines. No masks starting February twenty eighth.
Yes, optional, optional is what it is. You can choose to wear a mask unless you are one of those in one of those three categories.
Exactly. And it still was still, we're still proceeding with the test and with the test kits.
Test kits.
Available to people.
Test kits for as long as people want to sign up for them. Like I said, it's, you know, I I kind of tried to push people to get them in earlier this week so that. So we could get this test kits to kids this week.
Right.
But if you signed up for them today, we'll get them to you in two weeks.
And symptomatic testing will remain.
Symptomatic stays too. So that's the shift is they're going from. Looking, you know, trying to. Track close contacts to more tracking symptomatic cases is really what their what focus is moving to.
Is there more of an explanation? It's just because of federal, the busing?
That's a federal law.
The federal law.
The federal law.
So it's all all federal, all public transportation.
Right.
It's got covered on federal federal law, so. That's them.
The one good thing about it is I I've heard some kids say, well, my kids say, that they won't, if they're not wearing their masks, but they. Find that they're in a room with other kids or staff who are all wearing theirs by choice. They would keep theirs handy and just out of respect for those people, they would pop theirs on. So the fact that they have to wear on the bus means they'll have it with them. Just in case.
And I would, everybody respects everybody's choice.
I'm asking at this point.
Was that your?
Every time I put on a new jacket, I gotta find a mask. Yep, that's what I have for tonight.
Anyone have anything else to say or add?
Just to clarify, as of the twenty eighth, will masks optional?
Uh, that's what, yeah.
Two more days.
We need to find out what.
I need I need to get, I need to get official notice from the Boxer Board of Health if that's what happens, but that would be what I would send out tomorrow, Friday, that.
You just took your chart down, but I just wanted to point out because. I heard that there was a comment made that at the board in Boxford, you know, they meet once a month.
Yep.
And the timing that you would have needed to have asked them before their last meeting was when that was at thirty four.
Correct.
And you used your discretion for the safety of our students and staff, not just the safety. But the operational capacity to function as a district to just wait till we got over that. And I think that's fair, and I don't, if anyone were to, you know. Say something differently, I just, I want to defend your decision on that. And I'm also very glad, like, I'm one of the people who wrote to the Board of Health at this point and said, I support. Dr. Harvey's request for exemption. So. At that point, I think at this point. You know, we were all on the same page. We followed the process and we got here, and we've all had the same goal all along.
I think it's one piece that really needs to be stressed, though. The Desi language. That magically changed. It changed a lot. Prior to that, there was no way to police vax versus unvaccinated if the waiver was submitted and approved.
Absolutely.
It was made to not be, it it was unattainable without affecting the rights of the children. So that needs to be stressed for all of us. Everybody, people need to understand that. When that language changed, when in, I don't know exactly when it changed. It was like.
Yeah, January tenth, I believe.
Okay, so January tenth. So. Again, that's just.
I think they told us until the twenty something.
Right. So if it wasn't made public, but I just, you know, not everybody understands.
It would have, it would have been a nightmare to actually implement. And I and I. If I said it at this table a couple of times through October and November, that I I didn't know how we could do it based on what that language was expressing.
Yeah. So we'll breathe a little easier, sleep a little easier. And let's just not forget, we're respecting everyone's different choices and not mask optional, not, no masks. Anything else from your other states now? We can move along.
No general district update?
I think we cut it.
Never seen that on the agenda before.
I didn't have.
That might help to just break it out.
Communications manager.
There's some confusion about what's on the agenda sometimes, so. So the annual report is something that the towns, well, Topsfield asks us every year, Boxford, I guess, asks us every year. I don't know what Middleton does, but I think we send it to them. I haven't gotten a request from them, but anyway. They ask for, it's part of like the, what they do for their towns and the town meeting time, like Topsfield at least, gives everyone a printed version of the whole annual report for the year. Every department is covered. So it's just kind of a routine thing. So I'm thinking, I wanted to thank the administrators who had the department, invited department heads to provide some of the content, which helped. And the only other thing I meant, I'll mention is that I did introduce something new this year, which we, I had not seen done before. Just based on how lucky we are as a district to have like so much support from volunteer organizations. You know, we're so often, we're accepting gifts from MEF, for example, and we have included in the past the dollar signs for that. But to invite them to also include a little blurb about their organization. So that's why you'll see groups are groups that are volunteer-run 501(c)(3) organizations, which are MEF, CPAC, MM, so Masco Education Foundation, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, Masco Music Parents Association, and Parents Activity Committee. So see them in there too, that's something new. I will entertain motions to approve it, if anyone has one. If there's any. The annual report?
Second.
Carolyn, move, Costa second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Nice job.
Thanks. All right. We're now going to move to vote to accept the tentative agreement with the Masco Teachers Association for new collective bargaining agreement for the period of August 15th, 2021 through August 14th, 2024. I guess I'll take a motion first, if anyone has a motion to approve that. Melissa's moving, so I'll move.
A second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. And before we move the vote, I just want to thank the union for joining mediation and coming to an agreement together. Prepared just a little note about it, the school committee values our teachers and we think this contract gives all parties what they need for success. I think this contract is fair to the teachers and it's fair to the taxpayers. And most importantly, it is good for the kids. The school committee's priorities during this negotiation cycle were to seek structured professional development time, we think that's good for teachers, acknowledgement of contract costs relative to tight town budgets, I think that's good for taxpayers, and flexibility to allow for daily schedule improvements, including something like a wind block, which is good for kids. One way we achieved this was by exchanging two afternoons of after-school help time for an increase of 90 minutes of additional instructional time per week during the school day. This allows for more flexible and equitable access to support for students during the day. This exchange of times allows us to stay within the financial parameters of our school district and towns. Teachers make school what it is. Our schools are assets to our, to our community and the well-being of our youth and the success of our schools reflects the strengths of our communities. I think this contract will reflect that. So with that, if there's no other discussion. Okay, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Abstentions? So the, we have accepted the agreement. Will be posted publicly tomorrow. Next, we have a vote to accept tentative agreement with Masco Paraprofessionals Union for new collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. So just noting, both of these are retroactive for the start date. Any motions to approve this? To approve, Carolyn, approve motion.
Professional contract?
I'll second.
Bill seconds. The comment I'll make about this one was that I just feel very happy to see that in this contract, we are recognizing the value of our paraprofessionals by adjusting the salary schedule to perfectly reflect the market. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? So we have approved the tentative agreement with the paraprofessionals as well. Yay! Next on our agenda, Melissa, we're going to be talking about some proposed amendments to the regional agreement.
So for us is six amendments to the district agreement. The first amendment, I'm going to explain that one separate from the, the others, has to do with the amendments that we approved last year. And the clause for fiscal year, for the apportionment formula for fiscal year '24 had omitted of the phrase that's highlighted that says the total required local contribution for all member towns multiplied by B, the ratio, which such members, towns, October 1st, people enrollment in the regional school district were. And that's necessary to be put into the contract so that we can have a budget and make an apportion next year. So that's the first amendment. And the next five, as part of the process for when we make changes to or amendments to the district agreement, Mike has to submit the same to DESI. And he got back comments. So the next five changes are based on those comments and, and of DESI. That the, the, essentially what they do is they either make a correction, which on the second one, corrects corrects a sentence number, and then in the next several add language that is either a statutory requirement or in a, in a regulation of DESI. DESI provided these with a lot of work from Mike back and forth. So the policy committee, subcommittee is recommending that the full committee approve all of these. However, there is, I think, one change on Amendment 16. Mike, all of them, all the others show the clause with the correction in it, and I didn't know if it was appropriate in this situation to show it here.
What is it?
Article, Amendment 16, where we add the phrase and approval. It's the.
I don't see, oh.
16, there's the.
Write that one.
Yep.
I didn't know if we had to show it with that sentence in it.
We don't, as far as DESI's reading of it.
Okay. That was just brought up, so.
It's just a different format than all.
It's a different one, so for most of them, for just making it easy, we struck the whole paragraph and inserted a new paragraph that basically said the same thing. But all of these were sent to the Department of Education. I have it in writing from them that these amendments would pass their muster. So I agree, it's different, but they're, they're okay with it the way it is, so.
Okay. Do any of these amendments affect this? Make any difference?
No.
The first one does.
Well, I understand.
The first one, we would not be able to put together a budget calculation next year.
This year we're fine.
But DESI comments.
The other ones are all not material.
And then if we were, I know we've been talking from time to time, making other amendments to the district agreement. Does our new, should our new approach be that we run it by DESI before we go to the three-town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what they have instructed me that to be done from here on out.
Okay.
But before, before it comes to this step, they want to say yes.
And they told Mike that if we make any changes to what they sent us, that it would need to be back to them for approval.
Got a lot of extra capacity.
I know, I'm surprised.
Borrow from them.
Right.
Apparently it's your option for that person.
Every time, as I said, every time I sent them a document, got back four or five pages worth of comments on the regional agreement. Mind-boggling of the things that they kind of came up with. Yeah, it was, it was pretty amazing. So but these are, as I said, they're not really material, most of them are actually stating state law or Commonwealth population and just making sure that they're added in there.
So we just need to make a motion and approve these? Make, I'll make that motion.
I'm gonna make seconds. Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes to both these amendments to our towns. So are the, what's the next, are you guys contacting the town, each of the policies?
So the process is I'll provide a summary.
Perfect.
To each of the liaisons. And then the, this document can be forwarded to the towns.
Thank you.
No changes.
No changes.
So we're all going to have to prove it.
Keep it the same, don't let your town change it.
Yeah.
I'll fill that.
Will that be in your summary?
Yes.
Instruction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for taking the extra time for that. Subcommittee reports. I think Terry delegated you, Patty. For community relations.
Yeah, we had a good meeting last week. We had some parent involvement and community involvement that joined the Zoom call, which was nice, which allowed us to have a little bit of a longer conversation. Just brainstorming, you know, different ways that we can come together as a community. And some parents had some really creative ideas, so we just encouraged the community to email us, our subcommittee, if there are ideas of how to bring the Masco community together with parents, you know, parents, teachers, staff, and other members of the towns, just in a positive, productive direction, just to try to help with the healing process. So we're still in the process of that, I think we'll talk more about it the next meeting. And encourage any kind of creative ideas that folks have. And I know we had one of the members of the PAC had joined and had indicated there are, there is a need for more members. So if folks are interested in doing that, that was something we talked about a little bit. And I'm trying to think what else I'm forgetting now.
Senior concert.
The concert, yes, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, just real briefly, we had talked about that concert that we would often did in, in December and it didn't happen this year. But Randy O'Keefe has, is arranging a concert for Trittown Seniors on Tuesday, the 29th of March. Time to be determined. And we're in the process of reaching out to the, the councils on aging and the appropriate equivalents in the three towns to start publicizing that.
Yeah, exciting.
Thank you. And your next meeting is March 9th, right? Did you already set that?
Yeah.
So I noticed after that that's the same night as we're, the night we vote on our budget. So Terry was gonna, I think she was just gonna keep it 5:30 on Zoom and then everyone has to zip over here. So like Zoom, that one would still stay, I think.
Okay.
Confirm that and make sure it's publicized appropriately. Because it's already been publicized, you know? So sorry that we didn't realize that sooner, because it's kind of a lot in one night. Although the night we approve the budget is often a little easier than.
So we have to, yeah, we have to kind of figure that out, so. Our second is, is our next meeting. So we have a public hearing on that. And I think we just had budget deliberations, is really the only agenda item. So the list that Jeff, that Jeff presented, so.
Yeah.
We have to talk through, because we missed the Tuesday. My fault. We should have met yesterday.
Oh, right.
I never sent it out.
I thought, I didn't also recognize because of the vacation.
Right.
Agenda.
Right.
Oh, okay. All right, well. All right, anyway, just making that note for community relations, at least on the 9th, to just remember that same night. Costa, you chaired budget last week?
Ah, yes, I met with six representatives of FinComs of the three towns. Mike presented the budget as it stood on February 2nd. And the discussion afterwards focused on understanding why the elimination of a middle, middle school team was not part of this budget and the criteria for such a cut in the future, the use of grant funds and the possible use of excess SBA reimbursement for a future SBA reimbursable project.
Thank you. I, I might actually go out of order just because that last thing you mentioned also came up as policy.
Yep.
Can we do the policy subcommittee?
So we had a meeting last night where we discussed this, but also came up is that the Topsfield delegation met with the FinCom on Monday. And so I'm actually giving a policy and a liaison report at the same time, so. They all go together. And they expressed that if it's the will or if we feel as a committee that perhaps we should suggest to the towns that we take our excess SBA funds that are flowing back to the towns and fund the stabilization fund or with limitations, that we start the process of talking to our select boards and town administrators. And I was actually contacted today by the Topsfield Town Administrator who says that the board would like to hear from us. And I, I told him that I anticipated that I would have this conversation tonight to see if the board, the school committee feels that we should speak with our boards. The idea can't really come from us, it's just what we, you know, what would be ideal for us to happen. And I think that the, it would be a limited. Costa was able to provide some language at one time. And I told Kevin that we would, if we were to say we would like a warrant article that's, that asks a member town to allocate such member town share of the Masco excess building funding to the, to the Masco stabilization fund for a limited purpose of, and Costa's words were planning, SBA application, design, and/or construction of the next Masco bonded projects. And that there would also need to be language that conditions that funding upon the approval of the other member towns. So if that's something, Costa, you can explain what it does a little bit better than I, more elegantly. And I don't know, it helps us.
There's $495 or so that's the SBA reimbursement is above the last bond payment. So that $495, if you look at the, the apportionment sheet, is, shows as a negative in the capital, you know, assessment. You know, towns, you know, could sort of fund their operating budget on the net, which is not a good idea for them to do. Each town could get a check back from the district in their respective amounts. To me, that's kind of. To me, that's kind of short-sighted on everybody's part because it may not be next year or the year after, but very soon money will be needed to get the project ready for an application to the SBA. There's costs involved in doing that. So this is money that's coming to pay for a capital project that's kind of already paid for and the next one coming. So leaving that four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars with the district to use for that defined purpose, to me, seems to be in the best interest of all four entities.
So at this point, I think our administration has been very clear that it's a town's decision. And so I think that what you guys are suggesting or what came out of the budget and then the policy subcommittee and the liaison meeting was that it seems like it would help the towns if they heard a consensus of the committee requesting to them to look into it and then give them some starting language and then let them take it because it's not our decision. It's their decision. It's yeah, so.
You know, it it is the individual towns, you know, decision, but for it to actually happen, you know, the sort of it's almost like us sponsoring a warrant article. So back when we did, you know, capital projects, okay, this is the project that's happening. It's going to cost this, your share is that. It's almost like that, so we
Almost.
Almost.
It's not. So that's why I think.
Sounds like it's close enough. I mean, your request has to come, yeah, has to start somewhere.
And it has to be consistent with the three towns, and we're the only that can help.
Draft the language, send it. You know, if, you know, everybody wants to put it on and approve it, great. If somebody doesn't want to put it on or somebody doesn't approve it, it doesn't happen.
Right.
I have one question before I ask for a potentially a motion from anybody is is
Not opposed to it for that.
Oh, no? But can't anybody make a motion anytime, anything they want?
I would I would recommend against voting on that tonight. I would take to it on Mark Second.
Okay, I take a straw poll because we have a timeline that we have to, we have warrant timelines.
Right.
Yeah, we can straw poll, I suppose, right?
Yeah.
Get a sense of the will of it.
I don't want a formal motion, but because I don't think they're looking for an action. They're just looking
Yeah.
direction.
Okay, that was just my way of trying to make it something actionable. So straw poll of the committee, if it would you be, is there anybody who would be opposed to asking the towns to look at a warrant language that would make it so that the debt roll-off goes back into Masco's stabilization fund for the specific purpose of design, construction, planning, SBA application for the next bonded project, capital project? No. That's my straw, that's my very official straw poll. So I think
Do you need to make it connected to the MSBA? I would try to get that piece of it out of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would not because that, you know, that is the the purpose I suggested for, and I don't think it'll gain support if it's for kind of any purpose.
But what if it's, what if, why? What if we had a capital project that we did not go to the MSBA for funding for it? That's the problem.
That's my point.
Yeah.
Well, any capital.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't. There's only certain projects we would go to the MSBA for, right? Only certain projects fall under their accelerated program acceleration program. We're not going to be putting on any additions, so, you know, we're not going down that path, I don't think.
Right.
So I think it's more likely than not that the projects that we're going to take on probably wouldn't go through the MSBA.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Then it's, you know, without going through the SBA, then it probably won't get support in all three towns.
Well, what if it's part of a capital plan?
Do we have a plan?
Well, we wouldn't ask for to use the money until we do have a plan.
Never had a plan.
Right. Never had one.
But I let me follow up. Why why would the towns not support needed infrastructure improvements just because the MSBA isn't involved?
Because the, you know, if the money's already in the station fund, then what it's spent for is solely in the purview of the school committee.
That has to recap.
They trust the SBA more than the school committee, is that what you're saying?
I am saying, you know, if it's a a project that's going to get SBA reimbursement or is, you know, has that potential, then you can
That's so limiting. Right, I mean, we're not just going to do projects that the SBA is going to approve. We're going to do the projects that need to get done.
You could have a project that that you we can't wait on the SBA for.
My my suggestion is that we tell our towns that we would like to earmark the funds for projects and then we can ultimately let them work out the language.
I mean, the starting place could be, I mean, obviously it's dated, but we have the Habib report, right? So so it's it's something. And my guess is that all of all of whatever of that stuff that remains, some of it's probably SBA and 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 much of it is not. But it's still stuff that's got to get done. We support us doing that.
Is it stuff that would need to be bonded again? Like, are we looking at that? Like, I know you don't know because we haven't had
Depends on the amount, yeah.
We're gonna need a bond.
Sort of the assumption, right?
Yeah.
So I think the assumption is that because we would be needing to prepare for the next bonded project, some money will be needed for planning and design. So Costa, I feel like that to, you know, taking away the SBA application piece of this and just saying planning, design and or construction of the next Masco bonded project would hopefully achieve what you're saying because you're suggesting that the towns understand if they just say, oh, just pop it back in the stabilization fund, they've lost complete control and we can we can vote, our legislative body can vote to what the administration can do. They want it to be pretty specific. I think capital has to be capital, but
Has to be used in capital.
So that's exactly.
So this is just making
Moved into the capital stabilization fund, you can't do anything but capital work.
I think this just gives the town that that confidence that
Yeah, it gives them a little comfort.
I think that sentence with the removal of SBA is
Yeah.
Okay.
Should give them that confidence.
And my question, I just am looking for clarification because it was asked to me today and I think I gave the right answer, but it's a Masco vote to use the fun. Once it's funded in our stabilization, it's just our vote as a school committee.
School committee.
That that's how I explained it. I hope that was correct. Did that way too, so we're good.
I believe it's a two-thirds vote.
Okay, but the town, it doesn't go back to the towns to use.
Is it two-thirds?
Yes.
Because it's a budget or
Yes.
It's a budget.
Stabilization fund, yeah.
Twenty-two thirds.
And the other question that came from someone from our actually select board chair to me specifically on that was that one of their thoughts for Topsfield at least would be if it's if if, because especially Topsfield, it's kind of not giving them that little extra buffer in their in their model for the overall town budget. Would the expectation be that we're doing something with that money in FY twenty-three? Could we anticipate?
I'm going to say no. Because I think that's about an hour ago.
I don't think you can draw that conclusion, Carolyn, but.
So you would say you don't know? That's what your answer is.
The goal is to develop a capital plan. I'm not in the same place as Carolyn, but she's seems to be a skeptic tonight.
Oh, no, I I I choose, my understanding of this, and maybe it's wrong, is that like we have a whole plan and then we decide how we're going to finance it. So I didn't I didn't see us getting to that point this year. But if we can do benefit pieces.
Money spent on planning.
Yeah, I thought we were working on the planning this year, but not
That would just be a question Topsfield would ask, that's why I asked.
Does it matter to them?
Yes, it does, because why why not? Because they're in a position where they're we're bumping up four point nine percent without, and this helps.
So to them, it does. It doesn't matter, but to them it matters whether it's sooner or
Matters like if it's going to be used this year, they'd be much more likely to say to let Masco put it into a planning sign production fund. All right, well, I got my straw poll. Anything? So that was it. And then we're moving on. Anything else on those? Oh, either of you have any meetings scheduled, budget or policy?
We are going to have a meeting at the end of March once the budget's approved, so. After February break, I'll have another meeting where it'll get announced here. And budget, I think we're just on to anti-racism.
Next meeting will be Monday, the twenty six P M.
And will you be wearing a mask at that meeting?
We will find out.
Optional.
I don't think so.
It will be optional. We've done a bunch of negotiations since that liaisons have been covered.
Starting now.
For everything else? So I'm going to move us into consent agenda. If there's any reason to pull any of these. Approving, I'm going to seek a motion for, I guess. Yeah. I I'll follow them up.
Approve consent agenda?
Yes. Okay, so all in favor of approving the February second meeting minutes? It's in the amount of two million two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-one cents. And approving the DECA overnight field trips, which I just signed. Approve, I can officially sign.
Sign them later.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Yay, opposed, extensions, none. I applaud. Copy, it is after ten thirty. No objections, I will adjourn our meeting at ten thirty-five P M.
Well done.
Ten thirty-five, thanks. I almost I warned you guys that it might